So, okay. So I'm waiting to get a response from the gentleman who's the state history. I'll talk to the guy who's the Easter or town of history. And I'm telling him what the law says and what the letter I got from Mr. Culto says. Nope, 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 interrupts me twice. Nope, nope, nope.
Okay.
So, okay, we'll just straighten them out.
Yeah, cool. I definitely tapped into you at some point about that. That's why I love.
I uncover stuff almost like every other day. And in my basement, I have found an old over sticker.
Oh, thank goodness.
Oh, from the nightclub? Well, I was gonna say, you want me to give it to you or should I just give it to Susan?
Give it to Susan.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, unused, never used.
I love, I'm so glad you found it.
For the nightclub you're talking about?
Yeah.
The burn down?
Yeah.
It has the most ironic name ever.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I have the.
How are you?
I have the.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you as well.
Thank you so much for, you know, taking me in and supporting me and I appreciate it.
We have these teams, right?
Yeah, okay. Little I team. Somebody else said.
That's what I do. I like to put my coat here just in case. A little baseball hat.
That's right.
Kids have to make a red flag. Now, are we gonna have executive session in your team?
Yes.
Yes, over there.
Over there? All right.
I was gonna ask you.
So I won't unpack anything.
Well.
Do you, you guys use like laptop though in LA? I know you do obviously.
You can.
Is there a plug up here at all or is it?
I think there is on each side.
I mean, it's a long meeting, right?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that.
Oh, yeah.
There were some. There's one right underneath that list area.
Okay, yeah.
So it was passed.
Okay, that's all I have for correspondence. Anyone else?
Well, I had correspondence, but it's in the other room now since we changed rooms. But I did want to bring up that very nice letter that our previous mayor Stan Delano and Mary Lothar wrote. Does anybody have it?
No, but I did read it.
Yeah, it was, I wanted to read it because it was.
Go get it.
Do you mind?
Let's get through correspondence and that way we can just pick up work, you know, grants afterwards, so.
Tim, do you have the Wi-Fi password?
Yeah, it's Village Fall.
Do you? Oh, your email. Is your email open right now?
Judy stole my thing, so I wasn't able to set it up. I should get it back.
Okay, so, okay, soon to be up.
So generally speaking, any email through our, through our account is fairly fair.
Well, and actually, don't make any email to a personal email if it in fact involves village business.
Oh, okay.
Which, as a general man, years ago, I think there was a lot more business being conducted through personal emails because of some issues that I think the state has with its email service. But I do, I believe, I mean, I don't have. I think that in those last several years, the policy has extended the future ability there.
So very Hillary Clinton.
Just because there is no expectation of privacy in that email, you know, in your public village government email. No reason of expectation of privacy. There are many states or.
Okay, so since Matt's resignation came so sudden, Mary and Dan thought it would be a good idea to offer their assistance if we didn't find anybody to take Matt's position. So this is what they wrote. Dear Mayor and Board members, the village of Williamsville is our home and a community that we are proud to be part of. Elected office is challenging, balancing the responsibilities of leadership, personal values, and the good of the village is and always has been a low-shouldered by the officials throughout the history of Williamsville. We recognize that there is a vacuum created by the departure of Matt Eto'o and that trustee Eto'o's specific involvement in many of the village's land use processes is not something easily replaced in a short time. Rather than see the village struggle to bring someone in for a six-month duration of a critical juncture in so many projects and during budget formulation, both of us are willing to commit our own time and experience to filling the void and offer our services potential appointments to the vacancy. As Mayor, Mary preserved the village's national landmark mill and oversaw the completion and adoption of the current comprehensive plan. She created the farmer's market and was mayor through a decisive anti-disillusion vote. Her policy intent tenacity set the foundational opportunities in place for future boards to build a new zoning language and Main Street transformation. As Mayor Dan led grassroots efforts to preserve the village in the face of a regional dissolution movement and later served as a trustee before being asked to step into a void at the deputy mayor level. Created by a resignation of Christopher Duquin, Dan participated in transformative projects such as adoption of 26 new local landmarks, advancement of the region's most aggressive retreat program, and significant zoning implementations, leading to a new mixed-use standard and ultimately high restriction on Main Street. Eventually found himself thrust into leadership responsibilities as mayor where he oversaw directly the implementation of the much anticipated picture Main Street project. We both share concern that our village may be distorted as a part of a broader narrative, and we stand ready to serve as needed and pledge to continue to advance the village that we all love. Please feel free to reach out to either of us if we can help fill the temporary void. Signed, Dan Delano and Mary Lothar. I just wanted to share that with everybody because it was nice. I mean, it was very kind for them to step forward and offer their help for the next six months, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's great. And I have to say that I work with Dan on the tree board, and it's good to hear that, you know, I know personally, obviously Dave and I are on that committee or we're on that committee, so thanks for sharing that. I will definitely reach out to him.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And, you know, I know I have a lot of big shoes to fill here, but I'm gonna do my best and I, like I said, I need the help and support of all you guys, and I appreciate it in advance.
Okay, and the other correspondence I have received is related to the upcoming resolution, but I'll keep those for later, I guess. I don't want to read those. All right.
That's it.
I think Mary's on the HPC too, right?
She is, yeah.
Okay, so I'll be working with her too, so, yeah, thanks.
Okay, trustee, or Stephanie Mation, sorry.
I have nothing to.
Trustee Mike.
Nothing that's not going to be repetitive. I just wanted to thank Mary, both Mary and Dan, for reaching out and for offering their topic.
Okay, so with that, we are going to adjourn into executive session across the hallway to discuss residents' concern regarding a village employee. And once we are done with that discussion, and I apologize in advance because I'm not sure how long that discussion's going to take, but once we're done with that, we're gonna come back in for work session, and we will start our village board meeting promptly at 7:30. So that's kind of the agenda tonight. So if you're here, wanna just kind of hang out, you know, we're gonna step across the hallway for this, okay? Even though it's work session?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I will make a motion to step into executive session to discuss a resident's concern regarding a village employee. All in favor? Okay.
This week, I have a work session is a.
I guess I just forget because we're just more informal during work session, so that's okay. That's good to know. So we're going across the way. Oh, you do, you will need to write just a resignation letter for tree board and for land board, so just to put, you know, just so we can have it for. Yeah, whatever we don't finish after, before our board meeting starts at 7:30, we'll do our board meeting and I will always go back to the work session. So, yeah, sorry, I can't give you guys enough time.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Could you? Wait, why are you?
I'm not.
What are you doing?
Yes, are you Facebook friends with Ethan? Did you see him lately? He's a guy with his girlfriend.
Yeah.
I mean, it's good for him.
So I guess I'll make a motion. We're back into work session. We did it over there, but just for everybody's knowledge. Okay. All right. So let's pick up with correspondence. Emily, did you have some other things you wanted to talk about? Not, not, not at the moment, no. Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else have any other correspondence? Not, we'll move into grants. Pete, you want to give the grant update?
This is really great grant update. So far for our 2020 grants, we did not receive the WQIP, which was a $4.7 million grant that would have paid for a considerable amount of our sewer consolidation product. For reasons we don't know, we went back to the grant. We hope to gain some insight in a couple of weeks. Maybe even next week. And we'll have a meeting with state representatives on what went wrong. Because indications that we received through Bernie said that we have a really good shot at receiving. So Judy and I plan on being on a call with Bernie and state representatives for that grant. We also did not receive the grant for that would have been for the dam study. I know WAP is a dam study. And did not receive the grant for sorry, the, we did not receive the grant for what it paid for the up to $100,000 to redo the comprehensive plan. So fortunately, I had that bad news. Good news is out there still is a grant that would be for a greenway manual, which the greenway is part of our comprehensive plan. So fingers crossed that that comes through. That grant is through the Will C. Wilson Jr. Foundation. We applied for that early December, and we won't know until late spring whether or not we got. The other grant we have out there now is right here.
That's for the fitness court?
This is for the fitness. We were awarded the fitness court. I mean, the student requested some further information. So here it is. And there you'll find a lot of specifics. I did send some dollars onto cost. We got a $50,000 grant. Still with about 135. 130, 35, somewhere in there to cover the cost of the rest of the equipment and installation plus the concrete pad. Now, we already just wanted to kind of talk about it a little bit. And I know that's her reports is trying to figure out some direction of South Lawn Park. But for your review, take it with you and kind of look through it. But that's all the documentation that we received through the MVP grant. It would be good to know as soon as possible whether or not we want to accept this grant and move forward and do the fitness court. I just don't want to leave these people hanging. So anybody have any questions or anything so far?
Yeah, so a couple of things. So I wanted to circle back to that sewer grant that we did not get. Do you have a date with Bernie that you and Judy are going to kind of get to brief as to why we didn't receive that grant?
We don't have a date yet. He said he'd set one up. Give us prospective dates and go from there. So.
So, so for the record, for the board, that is a huge price tag to do that on our own. And I'll just go out on a limb and state that if we are required as one square mile of a village to lift that financially on our own, it's not going to happen. So, so I would be very interested in hearing their reasons because I know that Bernie had thought that we had a really good shot at it. So I'd like some definitive reasons as to why we didn't receive it.
I agree.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Bernie will tell us that grant.
I had a conversation with, I don't remember the fellow's name at the DEC, and he told me that everything looked good. So I
Well, it's unfortunate because it is, not only is it a cost burn into our residents, but it also costs burn into town of the empress residents as well. Because by us and Ben can maybe explain it better than I, but our infiltration of fresh water or clean water being put in through faulty piping into a sewer treatment is essentially we're being charged to treat water that doesn't need to be treated.
Yes, the residents are, yes.
Right. And so that would also be a burden to town of the empress residents as well, correct? In some respect, I mean.
I suppose.
Well, I'll make it. And, and you know, I know that the town was willing through an MOU to work with us. And we've been talking about getting out of this, I believe, since Basil Piazza was mayor in 1998. And so it's been a long time, long discussion, and I thought we were really close to getting it. So, so I'll just maybe hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have a reason as to why we didn't receive that money.
What's the price tag?
I have a question.
Yep.
Me Rogers. Who reviews Bernie's applications for the grant? Does anybody read those? I'm just curious.
Yeah, we all do.
So you all read them? I mean, is there anything that you felt was missing in terms of the application?
I can tell you that this year seemed to be a very competitive year.
Okay.
During the 2020, there were no grants.
Okay. Because I'm curious where the problem lies, you know?
I can also tell you that from reviewing everybody, the description of the products and the amount, the dollar amount that everybody won, our dollar figure was well higher than all the others. And the highest amount I saw was, saw was about two and a quarter million. So 4.75 million is well above that, one of the worst. So I'm not sure if those have something to do with it, but those aspects will be discussed with Bernie.
Okay. Be sure you let us know, please.
And we can reapply to this as a one time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as the grant's going to open later this year.
Yes.
We can, we can apply for it again.
That's $4 million price tag.
Hopefully, yeah, and that's cost go up.
The overall project is a $6 million plus project. We already have some grant funding. This was to offset the remainder of that price tag.
This was basically the 60 to 75% of the overall cost.
And we will be able to get the scoring.
Yeah.
On that. So we will know where we felt short.
Okay. Well, that'll be good to know. So.
We can modify where we felt short, and hopefully we can know it'll be open again this year. This is, this is the name of the game, you know? There's always winners and losers in grants and you know. I guess that's all. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry for the disappointing news.
It's unfortunate.
Just real quick, Pete, did you update the spreadsheet that you had provided for us?
Yes.
So we know.
I had the meeting, so I just, just kind of fell by the wayside. Yeah, absolutely. So.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then the other thing that you touched base on it was the $50,000 grant that we are being awarded to put in the fitness exercise equipment at South Lawn Park. And I noticed that Tori and Hunt, I think you guys maybe weren't, didn't want to reconsider.
Are we going to talk about this now?
Yeah, we should because it's part of the grants, and I also have it on my work session. So, yeah. So I'd love to hear where we're at because I would like to get back to them with a yes or no as to whether or not we want to accept it.
Well, I'll tell you what I did. The reason I was uncertain to go forward with it is because I didn't really see a comprehensive plan of how the South Lawn Park is going to be laid out. So before I see that, I can't commit to putting any type of outdoor recreation area in the park. But I'll let you know that I went ahead and called the town of Rochester, the city of Rochester. And I spoke to a few individuals there who do have the outdoor fitness center. And I, yeah, and I inquired, you know, I wanted to know from them how they felt about it. Did they like it? Was, is it costly for maintenance? So they got back to me. They're wonderful. And I'll just read what they said. The fitness court is primarily used by adults and teenagers. Let me, right now, the fitness court is an area that is more upper class. So I just wanted to add that to here. Our fitness court is located next to a youth challenge course, so the kids gravitate toward that more than the fitness court. It is very popular during the warmer months, especially when the kid, when the gyms were shut down during the pandemic. Most of the feedback has been positive. There were some concerns early on about COVID sanitizing, so a hand sanitizer station was installed. Repair so far have been minimal. Now, they put theirs up in 2019. The padding had become ripped on the platforms. It has been replaced with a more durable rubber type surface. City of Rochester Park's operations handles ongoing maintenance. It currently entails ensuring equipment is secure, occasional power washing and safety inspections. We do not perform snow removal during the winter months. Since most of the parts are metal, we have not had any issues with equipment holding up to the elements. So this was from a gentleman who works for basically like a DPW who's maintaining the structure. But the woman I spoke to, Sarah Scott, who is, she's the Director of Recreation and Park Stewardship. I explained to her who we were as a village and the size of our village. And she recommended, I said, what do you think about the cost of the equipment and, and the grant? And she goes, if I were you, the village size you are, you should ask, find, try to get a matching grant somewhere. Because really, the cost, she found it to be high, even for Rochester. So she thought it would be good if we could find a matching grant to the 50, like the Wilson Grant. Maybe apply for another, you know, rather than fork out the 130 on top of the 50. And I was happy. She, she was, you know, truthful and honest with me. So I want to pass that along to the board. That's why I had reservations.
Okay.
And I would just mention, I think in the original draft, it talked about the company wanted to secure the naming rights.
Correct.
And that's not a deal breaker, I don't think. But you know, if it could be I don't know. You know, name, naming rights going to whomever.
Blank, blank at South Lawn.
Yeah, exactly. You know, that, that certainly would be a good hometown touch and alleviate, alleviate some of the financial burden. So if we don't promise them the naming rights, we can do whatever we want.
Yeah, if we don't accept the grant.
Right.
And we just buy, buy it out of like using other means.
Yeah.
And yeah, we wouldn't be subject to the main rights.
Well, I think if we're, if we want to do it, we should decide if we, if we're willing to accept the fifty grand, the only way to do that with good faith is to say we're going to put in a hundred and thirty-five. So if we're not committed as a board to putting in one thirty-five, then in good faith, we should not accept the fifty thousand dollars. Because that's how the agreement works, they're going to give us fifty, so. So I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, well, maybe tonight, I don't know, we'll come to a decision on this, but if not, you know, I'd rather get to it sooner than later. So if there's another, you know, area, city or village out there that is open to doing this, then perhaps that would free up the fifty grand for them. So I don't know if anybody has any deadlines on, do you want to spend them out? Do you want to, you know, think of?
I don't.
No, okay.
I have a hard line.
Okay.
Because I looked at other adult fitness parks that are available and and, and they looked like they would be kind of across the adult age range up into including senior. This one doesn't, doesn't look like it's, it's really that conducive to that age group. But once I looked at online, were, so there's other adult fitness park options. We have local healthcare company. The company that is providing these grants is a healthcare company, from what I understand. It would be nice if it was independent health fitness center or Blue Cross Blue Shield or whoever, Ralph Wilson.
You know, it's just that MVP works exclusively with them.
Right.
I understand that, so, I understand that, but then I looked at some other options that, like I said, were I'll draw the price range, twenty-two thousand dollars. So going about twenty-two thousand dollars, and then we hire, put it in, and that's really less than, a lot less than a hundred and thirty-five. So I have a hard line on the price here. I am not willing to spend that kind of taxpayer money.
I agree. You know, Bill saying free money is never free, Dan?
I do say that.
And get a matching grant, like Eileen said, or something along those lines, or look at our own local, like you said. Option, and maybe Bernie could help us with that because he's more familiar with the available grants. But maybe tell him we'd like to go in that direction.
Okay.
All right, I'll tell him that.
All right. Are you, you, you good with that date?
Yeah.
Okay. No, I, I think that that, that's a very sound comment from, from both of you, and, and I'm fine with that. And I think that we can let those folks know, so maybe there's some other, just some how they can take advantage of it, but.
Yes, thank you.
You know, we can pursue things, so, but I, thank you for all the work and putting it out there, and I know you did go back to them to ask for a, an extension of that deadline, so.
Did the parks may have anything to do with this, or was it all?
Yeah, this kind of came about, they actually reached out to us in November, they reached out to Judy and I, and Judy and I.
Accompanied it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I meant, I meant.
I'm sorry, it's a stage day, but, but yeah, the company reached out and we had an initial meeting with them and then we sent it along with the Parks Committee, and the Parks Committee kind of vetted it a little bit and said that it sounded like a good idea, but they weren't quite sure how it would.
So they were kind of.
So they, they could have went either way also.
Right.
And we really haven't gotten, and we haven't started South Lawn Park yet. You know, the, what we're going to do, we haven't really laid it out, so we're not even sure where this would actually fit. And if we have to do it, their deadline was August, if we had to just flop it down and then build around it.
That was crazy.
It's not, it's not really put into the plan yet, so I guess my point, we need to have that plan completed before we proceed.
All right, so we can wrap that one?
Yep.
Yeah, that's the one too.
Okay. Um, okay, so did you have any other grant updates that I mean?
I believe that was all, that was, that was a lot that we were waiting for, but.
Can I ask about the dam grant? Is that for, like a creek to replace the?
Yeah, it was a, a local waterfront revitalization program grant that they went for to have a study of the dam to see how viable it is, what can be done to replace it, repair it, et cetera. Basically, it would just give us an idea of where we should go with the dam itself.
Okay, um, any questions on agenda review? I do have an item to go off agenda with regarding a shut and some paving work. Judy gave that to me. Yes, I'm just off agenda for it, okay. Okay, so we'll get into board reports then, and everybody should have a copy of the proposed Isklo property lease at Seventy North Forest. And I just want to have a conversation, maybe come to some idea tonight, if possible, whether or not we want to pursue this. And then I would reach out to Isklo tomorrow, if possible, with our counter offer and questions or concerns, so. Would like to go first.
I'll go first.
Okay.
So I, I read the lease thoroughly and I noticed that something was missing. Basically, there is a clause for early termination from the landlord.
Yes.
But not from the tenant.
Yes, we noticed that too.
Yeah, all right, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah.
So that.
It was also a ten-year lease.
Yeah, exactly, which we also didn't.
Which is also a problem.
Right, exactly.
So, yeah.
So that, and then one thing I found disturbing was landscaping costs. If we don't take care of our landscaping, which we will, obviously, right? They'll charge us half of, half of whatever the fee is for them to do it, so I'm guessing we're taking care of that then, right?
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I thought that was, and then.
Well, okay, but, but part of that is snow removal, so there was an issue that we would need to discuss with them because there may be some liability issue that they foresee, rather than having our guys put the plow down and take it to the end. There might be an issue where, you know, they need to do that, so that's, that's, we, that's not necessarily done deal that we'd be able to do. And that would be a discussion point that I also.
Another one, exactly.
Another issue, and then the same with the property tax assessment, that, that's another.
Well, that's true. I wrote that down, it says, we paid thirty-eight percent of property taxes, but they didn't tell us what the property taxes were. You know, there's a building on it, so I know that's always taxed higher. And the area we in doesn't have any building, it's open space, so that I agree with you was another one. And then also what bothered me with alterations. During the term, tenant will not make or allow to be made any alterations, additions or improvements, which I disagree with because we're going to go in there with some things and that should be included in this. For example, the salt tent, what do you call that?
Salt barn.
Salt barn, yeah, that should be included in this, you know, and not as an alteration, that's why we're renting this space. Yeah, so that was the other issue I had.
And those are all issues I had. In addition to that, I have an issue, you know, we'll have to discuss the insurance cost. I don't know what that would be, but that is also going to add on to the twenty-seven thousand dollar a year base. And there was also an increase of three percent over each previous year's base rent.
I also didn't like that.
Right, right, because what, what, what's happening here is if you take the twenty-seven thousand, while that may be a number that some of us are comfortable with for a yearly lease, when you add on the three percent and then the fifty percent of the cost and then the property tax and assessments and then the insurance.
It's a lot.
You're, you're probably going to be up roughly, I'm just guessing, about thirty-five thousand a year. Total, clear, so.
Can we take a step back? So we're talking about leasing this.
Yeah, so for those, right, so, right, so what we're doing is we have, the side yard is currently at South Lawn Park. And it's broken up into two sections. There's a section with a big white salt barn on it. And then there's a, a section a little further over where we have a leaf pile and some other items like our stop signs, pavers and miscellaneous things. So the idea was to take all of the stuff that's utilized in that side yard position and to move it over to Seventy North Forest.
Which happens to be on the.
Which happens to be on my policy, yes, and this is where he drew up this contract because we had acquired about moving those items out to free up South Lawn Park. But I also, in taking a step back, and this is a concern I brought up initially, and I think, you know, something we should talk about. So we're taking a step back from fitness court, right? The existing property that we own at South Lawn Park. We are moving forward this summer with a sport court, a tennis court and a large pavilion. Those are three items that we have budgeted for, that we've agreed, that the Parks Committee is, has agreed to as well. And those are three items that we are planning on getting done this year. All of those three items can go into that park without us renting and moving those side yards at this point in time.
That's good.
Now, that's not to say like down the road, when, you know, when, and if we get funding and we put in a splash pad and we put in whatever else in a phase two, a fitness board perhaps. That's not to say then that these, the salt, the side yards aren't going to be in the way at that point. But I guess my concern is putting forth this amount, this dollar amount today, starting this lease, let's just say March one, and not really per se needing that space immediately because we're not ready to utilize that space immediately.
Is that right, Ben?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, and also we have the option of perhaps different space, you know, for purchase, we're still considering that?
Yeah, that's still up there.
It's a conversation we've had, yeah, and, and if, you know, there are people who have feelers out and if a parcel becomes available somewhere, and we, we can't have it in Hamburg, because that wouldn't make any sense having them drive to Hamburg or that for, but, so it needs to be, you know, in some, either in the village or at close proximity to the village that would make sense from a driving standpoint. But, you know, we have looked over, what, the past five years, we've looked at several parcels.
About everyone that's adjacent to the village.
This is not like the village, actually, right?
Close enough to still be functional for us.
Yeah. So.
There's a lot in this proposal, this lease proposal, that I don't know is necessarily advantageous for us at this point.
Right.
But this is only the second draft.
Right.
We're, we're volleying back and forth here, so let's send it back to the report.
Okay, I'm okay with that too.
And, and so I can go back with all of these and if you all have others too, concerns, we can address them. But I guess what I'm asking is at this point in time, let's just say that I go back and they give us everything that we want. Is this even something that at this juncture, and I'm just throwing March one as a date because, you know, it's not too far off and I know you folks can mobilize, you can get your team mobilized to get everything moved quickly. So is that something that makes sense for us to, and let's just use thirty-five thousand as, as a landing number, thirty thousand? Is it something that makes sense for us to expend that this year to free up that space and why are we?
I want to know how Ben, I mean, yes, I really didn't know, know how Ben feels about it.
Well, I'm personally happy looking at that location. I don't want to pay that much. I don't think that's any of you should pay.
No, I agree.
And if, and if we're not going to need the space, as the mayor stated, if we don't need that space at this time until we further expand the park plan, why are we going to pay thirty March one for space that we don't need right now?
And we could possibly use that money towards a purchase.
We could get a little more aggressive on our purchase plan.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, I'd rather take that thirty thousand and throw it into a piece of play equipment or something, or.
I'm a hundred percent behind owning whatever.
Okay, I agree.
Right.
I mean, that, to me, is, is ideal, so we don't have to deal with this, oh, ten years, guess what, guys, we're very good.
Yeah.
So that's good. We can go forward with our park plan, the three items you mentioned.
We can absolutely, yeah, and then what, I mean, and the conversation would be with Isklo that, you know, we're just at this juncture, we don't need that space immediately. These are some of the, you know, concerns that we have as a board, you know, the ten years, the fifty percent, you know. They may say, okay, well, if you don't want it by March one, you know, we're taking the ta, offer off the table and that's their, you know, if they want to do that, that's fine. Yeah, I will say, you know, there really isn't a, a true, it wasn't an ideal situation to begin with because let's just say they have an ability to terminate within a year. And then let's say that they get an offer from a developer and they want to do some grants, something over there, and then Ben's kind of left with no, where, and where do you put this stuff then?
No, I think it's a better plan to go forward.
Yeah, I gotta, sure, yeah, my neighbor's law line.
Well, that, and that raises another question with working with the town, we could be required to a special use permit and potentially have variances on top of that.
Oh.
Which would bring us to the zoning board of appeals, if the residents would come out and say, hell no, we don't want this in our neighborhood.
Well, that's right, because it's a town.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Sorry.
That's, those are some other considerations for this specific spot that are just now starting to get flushed out.
Sorry, makes sense. Okay, so are you all, Ben, okay with me putting this on ice?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Do you, you okay putting it on ice?
Okay.
We make it work.
Good, okay, I'll do it. I think that's the right.
I will always take more, but I will make use of what we have.
Okay.
We're trying, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, all right, that was Isklo.
We gotta go.
Oh, gosh, okay, we gotta go. So we're going to stop work session now. Does anybody need to take a break? If not, we'll run into board meetings, fine, okay. If we need to take a break, like, you know, an hour or so, and so we certainly can, just let me know. Okay, so here we are, seven thirty. I want to welcome everyone to the Village of Williamsville Board Meeting for Monday, January tenth, and we will start off with the pledge of allegiance led by our newest trustee.
United States of America, a land for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, good, thanks.
I also want to introduce trustee David Sherman is now Deputy Mayor, David Sherman, so. Okay, Administrator Kindred, would you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Trustee.
Here.
Trustee Harrison.
Here.
Trustee Tori.
Here.
Attorney Bracco. Deputy Judge of Casino, here. And Director of Community Development, DePree.
Okay, thank you. We have no proclamations this evening. I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and we'll ship out a copy of those.
Actually, there was a mistake.
Okay, with corrections?
Yeah, so it's one correction I'd like to bring up. One of the speakers of the meeting was incorrectly identified. Speaker number two, his last name is not Civic, it is Civic, S I V I C K. Thank you, that's all I know.
Any other corrections? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one with the correction as noted by.
I'm abstaining because I wasn't here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have no public hearings this evening, so we will move into the suspension of rules for public participation. Keaton, I know we probably have some folks on the Zoom.
We have forty participants.
Okay, okay, so, so what I'd like to do is maybe we will go with those folks who are on Zoom first. And we will be timing tonight for three minutes. During Zoom, there's people in here, so unfortunately, we are going to have to cut everyone off at the three minute mark. So Keaton, will you be able to time that as well, or do you want someone else to time?
Somebody else to time, that way.
Can you do that? Do we have that little bell that we can maybe ring?
I can go get.
You want it? Yeah, just the one on the front counter, that seems to work well. Uh, I believe that's what Mr. DePree said.
Correct, yes, forty people, and. As of right now. Thank you. You're welcome. Just one moment.
Okay, so while you're doing that, I will make a motion to open the suspension of rules for public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So if you are speaking, I do ask for those also on Zoom, if you could state your name and address for our record. So if you are speaking, I do ask for those also on Zoom if you could state your name and address for our record.
Yeah, I'll call the participants each one by one. We already have a few hands raised. For those on Zoom, if you'd like, raise your hand and I will say your name and then you are able to speak to the board directly. First, we have. Joan Elizabeth Siemens. Joan, how do you say?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great. Joan Elizabeth Siemens, my address is five seven five zero Main Street in the Village of Williamsville, of course. And I just have a couple of thoughts as a business owner. I'm not sure if the mayor and the trustees know that I've been a resident and a business owner for thirty one years, since nineteen ninety one. And my concerns are that I guess there's opinions and and decisions maybe that are supposed to reflect business owners' views. And they they really don't. I've been here a long time and I think I've been kind of like a staple of the community, so to speak, because I've been here so long in business. But not one person from the village board has contacted me to ask my opinion at all regarding the mask mandates. Covid, anything. And I think that when someone is being quoted in the news as saying that their concerns are that the business owners are protected, blah, blah, blah. Well, maybe we should talk to the business owners who've been here a long time. I want to tell you a little bit of a personal story, just briefly. A little bit of a, my husband and I, just briefly, my husband and I. I can hear a reverberation. My husband and I are both vaccinated and we have the booster shot and we're very, very cautious. We rarely go out, we really don't. But the other day he was in a tire store and not one person in the store, including the employees, were masked. Two days later, my husband contracted Covid. And as a business owner, what you need to understand is that the people who are on masks are not. I'm sorry, what? I'm hearing other voices. Anyway, so as a business owner, what happens is that we have to close our business. Because people are not wearing masks, because they're spreading the virus. People like us. So we canceled our appointments, we lose business, and it's a concern. Another thing as a business owner that I'm worried about is Williamsville having this persona now. If that we are not safe for people to shop or to visit. And that's really seriously on my mind. And then just not only that, as a taxpayer, my concerns are liability. Board meetings and they become sick. Because people in that room are not socially distancing or they're not wearing masks, it's a concern that someone, the the village is going to be sued. So that's my thought. I'm very disappointed that people in politics, I've been there, they campaign, they go door to door. Because they want to get elected, but not one person came to me or my husband, who've been here thirty one years. Living here, paying taxes and running a business, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Joan. But we really didn't catch any of what you said.
Well, I caught what I could, I mean, but what do you want me to do? I mean, I can't.
I would like to say it again, then.
Our Zoom work, work.
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Not right now, thank you.
Can I, Joan, know that we couldn't understand three quarters of her conversation, please?
She should be able to hear us now.
Joan, can you hear us?
I I'd like to, yes, I'd like to repeat it if I can.
Hey, Joan, it's trustee Tori. Hi.
Hi. I'd like to repeat it if I can.
We can't hear you. The connection is very, very bad.
No, it isn't.
Everybody says it's bad. See, everybody's doing thumbs down.
The village needs to.
Everybody, it's bad?
No, it's it's bad because the village needs to mute themselves.
Yeah.
If the village would mute themselves, we could hear Joan.
Can we try again? I it when the village, the people in the village are talking, I can't hear.
Yes, we can.
Let me know if I can go again.
No one cares about what you're saying, Joan. Okay. Nicole, that's incredibly rude. Joan, the food. It is, but we've heard her and maybe someone else can talk.
Well, I I want the board members to hear me.
And I think they did. If they heard me talk, they could hear you talk.
Whoever's speaking right now, they just said they didn't hear three quarters of what I said.
Okay, all right.
So can I please, I don't know why we're having this anyway.
Enlighten us all, Joan, please.
Pardon me?
Enlighten us.
What?
Enlighten us with your words.
All right, so should I, I don't know. Somebody seems kind of mad right now. Ooh, anyway, I'll Joan Elizabeth Siemens, five seven five zero Main Street in the Village of Williamsville. And I have been here since nineteen ninety one as a business owner and a resident. And my disappointment is the decisions are being made that affect the business community. And no one that sits on the board or the mayor has contacted me to ask me my opinion at all. So I wanted to share a story that just recently happened. My husband and I are both vaccinated, we're both very thoughtful and careful. We're both boosted. He was in a tire store a few days ago, last week rather, and no one in that business, even the employees, were masked. My husband got Covid a couple of days later and it's just not a coincidence. So what happened is at our business, we had to cancel all of our appointments, move people off of the calendar. We lose business and it's very disruptive. So we would just hope people would mask to stop spreading the virus because it does impact our businesses and impacts our lives quite a bit. So I guess my concern is that, you know, when people are in politics, they go door to door, they visit people, they ask questions. Because they want to get elected and I understand that. But my concern is that we're such important issues. I've been here thirty one years and no one has reached out or even asked me my opinion. And the thing is, as a business owner, we just don't want the village to get a reputation as being, I guess, the Wild West. Where people are not being thoughtful or careful about heath health issues. Because we want still people to come here and want to shop and visit our businesses. I think another issue that I have or another concern I have as a taxpayer is that the liability issues. So if people are attending the village board meetings and people are not socially distancing or using masks to stop spreading the virus. You know, I wonder what would happen if somebody got sick, got ill, maybe died, lost business. And they were attending a board meeting and it could be traced to that meeting. So I wonder if there are liability issues as a taxpayer. So that's just my thing. I'm very disappointed. No one's reached out to me. And I really think that we should have mandates. I think we should have, you know, until we get through this. So, yeah, it protects people, but thank you for your time. I hope you heard that.
You can't.
Did we hear it? The board, did you hear what I said? Thank you.
The next up, we have. If, again, if you'd like, please raise your hand. And our next person is, raise your hand on Zoom, Sherri Gabriel.
Could could we go every other one? We're gonna listen to forty of this, forty people like this.
Well, right now, there's only three people with hands raised, so.
Okay.
Sherri Gabriel.
If appropriate, you know, they might want to drop off after they say their comments, so the band would be better.
Could you turn our camera back on? Could you turn our camera back on? This is Shira.
Okay, sure. Let me just find it.
Thank you.
There's never been this many people on. There are forty three people on right now. So it's a bit, it's a lot.
I'm just waiting for our camera to get turned back on. Is that possible? Oh, okay. I got you. Wait, here it says start my video.
Technical.
All right, there we are. Just to let you know, like, oh. Can the village mute themselves so that I can? All right, thank you very much. And just to let you know, my husband and I will both be speaking, so you'll want to reset the timer after my three minutes. Because he gets three minutes as well. On talk radio in late November, the mayor indicated that she was against mask mandates because they would hurt local businesses. However, as it turns out, the opposite is true. This proposal will hurt businesses. Polls taken in New York State by Ciena Firm and others show that over seventy five percent of people in New York State support mask mandates. Many people will not shop or eat in places they consider unsafe. So this poorly worded, legally dubious and scientifically inaccurate proposal, it may not have any teeth. But it will get an enormous amount of press as we see by the number of press outlets that are here. And that attention will lead people to not shop in the village. To prove that that point, earlier today, we posted a petition online that people could sign if they agreed with the following statement. And we had over two hundred people, two hundred local people signed and agreed that they said that the Village of Williamsville is voting tonight on a proposal that would ask the state and county not to come to the village to enforce mask mandates. I am looking closely to see if this passes and if it does, I will not feel comfortable taking my business to the Village of Williamsville. As many may feel emboldened to act outside current state and county mandates. Whenever possible, I will find alternatives outside the village when spending money. To be clear, almost two hundred people in the last five hours independently signed on to say that they will not spend their money in the village if this happens. Seventy five percent of local people believe in mask mandates. While other municipalities around us are increasing rules because people are dying every day, this is what the Village of Williamsville is doing. It's embarrassing and it's dangerous and I beg you to not vote this in. That's the end of my three minutes.
I'm Randy Kleiman, one thirty six South Cuyahoga Road, Village of Williamsville. There are so many false and misleading misleading statements in tonight's Rogers number five resolution regarding mask mandates. It's an embarrassment to this community to have its leaders trade in lies and half truths to make terrible decisions. Trustees who support this resolution will forever tarnish both their reputations and the reputation of the Village of Williamsville. The negative social and mental health impacts that the resolution purports to address result from out of control pandemic, which has killed more than eight hundred thousand Americans in less than two years. Faulty reasoning and willful ignorance, as is on display in this resolution, have contributed significantly to this death toll and the resulting social costs. Masks are not the reason for the social costs. Falsehoods, lies and reckless irresponsible decisions by public figures like Mayor Deb Rogers have contributed to our healthcare workers being inundated by the Covid pandemic. If you're really trying to help the healthcare workers who are putting themselves in jeopardy for us, enforce the mask mandate. The people of this village want all law enforcement agencies with jurisdiction to enter our village and enforce all of the laws. Who does the mayor think she is? Mask mandates are a simple way to save lives. They don't place an undue burden on anyone. This village government is off the rails. Do not pass this resolution. Thank you.
It's disgusting.
Okay, next up, we have Jess Coolen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I wanted to speak about my concerns regarding the Village of Williamsville's response to state and county Covid nineteen guidance. I am against the resolution on tonight's agenda that opposes Erie County and New York State's Covid nineteen emergency response. I very much. I very much support state and county measures to keep schools and businesses open while protecting public health during a global pandemic. I am against any effort to curtail such basic safety measures as mask mandates during surges in cases. I respect the public health officials working to protect our citizens and our businesses. I feel safer entering businesses that have effective public safety measures in effect. Because these measures indicate that the people in our village care about the citizens, the employees and the healthcare workers in and around this village. I want our schools and businesses to stay open. Our ability to have greater access to our schools has been critical to my own children's mental health and academic success. I want village employees to feel safe in their places of business. I have family members who work in the village. I work close to the village. We feel safer because of the mandates that are in effect. I want everyone to feel safe going to work and to not have to choose whether to be employed or not. I want employees to be healthy and able to come to work. There is a crisis in terms of teachers and regular employees being able to come to their places of business because of the impact of the recent surge in cases in Covid nineteen. Keeping people healthy is critical for our businesses' abilities to remain viable as well as our schools. Additionally, as Joan said earlier, I am extremely worried about liability to the village of stating opposition to state and county mandates. It's not only if someone contracts Covid and can can and can draw it to a village board meeting. But if any employee of the village gets Covid, our village is likely to be liable for any negative outcomes. This is incredibly dangerous and I am deeply concerned about this as a taxpayer. I urge the board to vote against this resolution and please get back to the actual business of running a prospering village and dealing with matters that they have control over. Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, would you mind providing your address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have started with that. My name is Jessica Coolen. I I live at thirty two Highland Drive.
Okay, next, who who has their hand raised is Gail Spire.
Hello, my name is Dr. Norman Spear. Gail is my wife. But she's going to give me her three minutes. I live at eighty five South Alakken, been there since two thousand and four. I am a healthcare professional. I'm a pulmonologist, an intensive care doctor, and I take care of Covid patients. I have seen Covid patients die. I've seen Covid patients with long term health effects lasting for months and months, months. Therefore, my orientation is to be opposed to this particular proposal. Because I think it is doing what Dr. Fauci said we needed to do a year ago, which was flatten the curve. It does not flatten the curve and we're seeing the effect now with all the ERs and so on who are running over capacity with burned out other health professionals, et cetera. Secondly, there is one particular proposal in this that really angers me. There is an implication that the state should just go out and get more help, get more people to work. Instead of limiting services, get more people to do the work. Healthcare professionals don't grow on trees. You can't just pluck them. You can't sit, you can't put an order in through Amazon and ask for a hundred new healthcare professionals. We need to be careful with our health professionals. We need to flatten the curve. We need to limit the exposure of everybody and only then will we have safe hospitals, safe ERs, safe businesses and a safe community. And I urge that this particular proposal be shot down. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next up, we have Melissa Jordans.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. I just wanted to read a statement that I shared with Mayor Rogers and the Village of Williamsville trustees. But not the newest member because I did not have his contact information. So I just wanted to say that as a village resident, I wanted to voice my strong opposition to the mayor's proposed resolution number five on the agenda for tonight. If this resolution is passed, it's my understanding that it is largely an empty gesture. However, I am a village resident and do quite a bit of personal business within the village, including shopping and utilizing salons and. including shopping and utilizing salons and other services, ordering takeout and eating in restaurants. And if the village were to pass their proposed anti masking and anti enforcement resolution tonight, while it may not have any legal merit or teeth, I believe that it will embolden the minority who may be like minded to ignore the currently enforced mask mandates from the state and the county. And I will be reluctantly forced to consider taking my business outside of the village to avoid the unmasked. This is not intended to be a threat, but it's the reality of the situation we're in today, while thousands of cases are being reported every day in our county. I ask that the trustees advocate for village businesses and residents alike who believe that we are all better served by a village that shows care and concern for the health and well being of its residents during an active pandemic. I believe that proper planning for a reduction in measures by public health experts at a time when case counts decline and vaccinations are available to all is a more prudent than empty gestures by a village board without a public health advisory. I also believe that this is not at all aligned with the wishes of the majority of village residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Next up, we have. Melissa, could you provide your address before?
Yep, it's one, one eighty six South Cayuga.
Thank you. And we still have a lot of people on Zoom here. We don't have anyone else with hands raised. Anyone else on Zoom who would like to speak, please let us know by raising your hand. If there are no hands raised, we will most likely move to the audience attendants.
Any hands?
Nothing yet.
Do they understand what that means? Maybe Keaton? Tell them where the symbol lies. Sometimes people who are unfamiliar with Zoom don't know where the symbol lies.
Yeah, we have, we have one right now. Susan Fenster would like to speak. Hold on just one moment, Susan. For anyone who is new to Zoom, if you'd like, please use the raise hand function. You'll find that at the lower panel of your screen. If you're on a phone, it might be a little smaller, harder to find. It's usually within these three dots here where you find a raised hand. So.
Thank you.
So we have Susan Fenster. Susan, are you there? Susan, can you hear us?
Okay. Yes, yes, finally. I'm sorry. I thought you were gonna unmute me. I didn't know I had unmute myself. Anyway. Forty six Columbia Drive in Williamsville. And I've been watching the chat box because there are a few members in Zoom that are having trouble I figuring out how to raise their hands and that type of thing. So I just wanted to tell you that Nicole Weinstein is trying to get a place to speak here now, and if you can unmute her and let her speak, that would be great.
What did it say? Susan?
That's all I wanted to say is to help Nicole speak if she still wants to. She's been struggling in the chat box area, trying to figure out how to operate the technology.
Thank you, Susan, for being kind and doing that.
Nicole Weinstein, correct?
Yes.
She doesn't appear on this list.
Yeah, I think she finally got disgusted while. Anyway, I, but she just disappeared. So anyway, I tried.
Can I suggest that we move to the floor while people are figuring out their, the technology issue? And maybe we can go back. You know, these people have been waiting here and they're in their comfort of their house. So maybe in priorities.
And Susan, if you are in contact with Nicole, if you'd like to come back and.
And anyone else who wants to, we'll get back to that. Okay. All right. So the floor is open. If you'd like to come up and speak. And so you'll be timing. So, okay, thank you.
Hi, Jim Dorfler, four or five cabinet. Can you give me that map, please?
Sure.
We're gonna change gears here. Got a lot of people talking about the mask. And I talk about parking signs that went up recently on Cadman Drive, which, you know, I came up and spoke before a little while. I've been on the streets since sixty nine, never had a parking issue. We got a disgruntled resident here that is causing nothing but havoc. And he requested signs put up. Can you get me where we're driving? Actually, leave right there. Got signs coming up from World Drive. Well, now you're Brookside. You got signs on both sides in this section. And coming up from World Drive, starting from here, both sides, going around to about four and I can, this was an issue for us, having guests parking way down the street. This resident that proposed this thing is only protecting himself. And again, we just, we want to be friendly, but we just don't see the need for no parking on both sides of the street. But there's gotta be signs put on there inside the circle, should have no parking because where he's been blocking everybody. I almost got hit walking. I saw a little girl almost getting locked in because you can't see through the curve. So there's gonna be no parking inside the loop. But if I'd have known this was on your agenda before, we'd have been up here talking about it, saying that we're not happy with this decision. So we're asking that some of this, no parking signs on the outer loop be taken off so people can live a normal life and have parking for their guests when they want to have a party. Thank you.
Can we, and that was, was that traffic, traffic and safety? It was traffic and safety recommendation. It was, it came from Tim Masters to traffic and safety, and Tim Masters actually went and tested the area and it was a hidden drive, you know, bend, you couldn't see cars. So he approved the signage, traffic and safety approved the signage, and we went forward to place the signage.
The board approved the site.
Absolutely. My recommendation of many people.
It's not just a decision to postpone it, we amended the code.
That's right. And there was a public hearing on this.
Well, we didn't know that the public hearing came up on the floor, but that's why we're kind of here tonight, just kind of showing our displeasure with it, disapproval with it. I'm stuck with the fire hydrant, so I can't park it by my house no matter what. But, you know, again, it's limiting how much parking we can have without having to walk halfway down the block just to park our guests. Thank you.
Sorry. I don't know. You can say.
Did my time start?
Oh, we're gonna start it now. Yeah.
Dennis Hoban, two ones, two one six California Drive. Thank you, Mayor Board, for letting me speak this evening. Probably wondering why I dressed like this. It seems like every time I come to a village board meeting, I get villainized in the Amherst Bee. So I thought, you know, maybe I'll put on a white shirt and a white hat. Maybe if the Amherst Bee's here this evening, I don't know if they are. Are they here tonight?
Don't see them.
Amy Wallace?
I believe they're retired via Zoom.
Are you out there? Well, quite frankly, I read the Amherst Bee after the last time I was here and kind of sounded like I was gonna take the board out in the parking lot and beat the snot out of them. And that certainly was not the case. I know you folks don't know me, but, you know, I'm a good guy. You know, that's why I wore this tonight to make a point. You know, nobody here to take my picture, nobody here to take my picture that, you know, me standing in the back yelling for freedom, that we don't need these masks anymore. This is the end of the pandemic. I don't know where these people are. I don't know what page these people are on. They're on this Zoom. But this is the end of it. I've had, I've had this thing twice. The first, the first time, the first time I had it, it was pretty bad. It was, it was the thing from China, and I was sick for about four days and a terrible fever. But that was the thing that they developed in a lab apparently in China. I had it in October. That was some kind of a variant. It was like, it was like a bad cold. Okay, I'm sixty five years old. I kicked it. First time I had it, I wasn't gonna go to the hospital because I figured they, they didn't know what they were doing. They were killing people left and right. So I'm not gonna go to the hospital. I toughed it out. I stayed at home by myself, and I toughed it out. The second time I had it, wasn't really that bad. This new one, this Omicron or whatever you want to call it, we're gonna run out of Greek letters sooner or later. But that's, I don't think that's so bad either. It's probably like a bad cold, you know, or maybe just a cold. So that's what I'd have to say. Quite frankly, I think the board is headed in the right direction. I know we got a new guy here. We'll see how this works out with Matt. Hopefully, he does a good job. But I think, you know, the board did a good job reversing the mask, you know, going against what the county said. Somebody on the board last time I was here made a comment that, you know, some of us were making very light of this and, you know, making jokes of it, particularly me, I guess. And I, this is as serious as a heart attack. You know what I mean? This is serious. I mean, you're making little kids wear masks.
Thank you.
Okay. My horse is double parked anyways.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rich Bucknous. I live at four zero nine Cadman. I too like to speak on the signage that's been put up in the parking. I lived on this location for twenty years and in the village majority of my life. Never once have I seen an accident in the location that the no standing signs have been put up. There hasn't been, in my opinion, enough information gathered. It was like a knee jerk reaction. I, I know you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, because there was a lot of correspondence.
Then it hasn't been disseminated to the public, even the chance of the behalf to speak on the issue. We wake up one day and all of a sudden there's signs that are blocking, you know, no standing signs. I have a sign that's in between my driveway and my neighbors. I literally have three feet in between that front inch space. The sign is in the middle of it. I have eighteen inches from the edge of my driveway to the sign. You can't park there anyways. It's redundant even to put a sign there because there's two driveways. You put it in between two signs. There are signs put in front of stop signs. It's current code. You know, you can't park in front of a stop sign. There's other streets in the area that are looping, Waterford, Royal Parkway. I have a whole list in my pocket that don't have signage up. What applies to the front of cabin because it's a loop should then equally apply that's in the back if we're concerned about blind spots. What are the effects? What I would really like is to see the sign placed closer towards the entrance of cabin because there is no parking in where the sign is. The sign is in a very poor spot for no reason. Sign also in front of Brookside is redundant if there's enforcement of current existing laws. Definitely would have liked to see more information gathered in public, having the ability, even a letter or something sent out to those people who live in the affected area on the whole block. We didn't get anything like that. It just happened. Lastly, one of the kind of knee jerk reactions is now that there's no cars parked there. People actually entering or coming down cabin towards the entrance are moving at a higher rate of speed because there's nothing to stop them. There's no things that they should be cautious about. And like I said, I've lived there twenty years, never seen an accident ever in this spot. Never seen anything but maybe a garbage truck or school bus having a hard time getting through because of parking on both sides. I'm asking, asking it to just be closed off.
Thank you.
Dr. Jean Civic, thirty four Wick Street, Williamsville. I know we've had some opinions as far as masks and non masks. Matt, welcome. Let's talk facts, not opinions. This was USA Today, five January, twenty twenty two, regarding Omicron. Eventually, we're probably all going to come down, be afflicted with the Omicron variant. But cloth and paper surgical masks do not work. The virus is too small to be filtered out. Only the N ninety five, if fitted properly, will filter out the virus because the N ninety five will filter out ninety five percent of the airborne particles. So those are the facts, not opinion. Thank you.
Amy Leach, eighty nine fifty three, Amy Lee Lane, Clarence Center, New York. Mayor Rogers, I want to thank you. My daughter came last, at your last board meeting for extra credit for her public policy course. Never in a million years did I think she would come home and say she spoke on behalf against the mandates. She's a senior in high school, and there's issues now with colleges. If you're not vaccinated, you could lose scholarship money. I want to thank you for speaking out against the mandates. I know for myself and my family, we have very limited disposable income. And now I choose where to spend that money based on mandates. If, if, if a business allows us to walk in, two of my members of my family wear masks, three of us don't. We are going to shop and we're gonna spend our money there. So I thank you. I applaud you. Your children one day will be very proud of you to know what you stood up against and what the rest of the board members did. The folks that are speaking out against you because of your choice to not be vaccinated, it's absolutely wrong. I went, I was lucky enough to go to Albany last week to speak against, to rally against the mandates. And I bought two signs. They said, we support our constitution. I know you support our constitution. I want more people to support our constitution than those of us that want choice. I can tell you right now for those folks that are scared on the phone, get yourself healthy. America is one of the number one unhealthiest countries alive. We are all gonna get this virus, and honestly, the best thing for everyone to do is to get your bodies healthy. Get supplements, get whole vitamins. Nobody out there in public health is speaking about that right now. So thank you again. We are standing with you. You have people all over Western New York that are with you.
Good evening. My name is Jack Refree. My address is one twenty three Autumn Creek Court. I just wanted to come here tonight and voice my support for your choice to remove the mask mandates. I think what we've learned over the course of what is it now, two and a half years, three, going on three years about, we've heard fifteen days to slow the spread. We knew it was, we knew it was nonsense from the beginning. So I just want to thank you for everything that you're doing. And I support your decision in removing the mask mandates. I think personal freedom is much, at much greater risk than any of our health is with this virus that has about a ninety nine point eight five percent chance of recovery. So I just wanted to come out tonight and say thank you for everything that you're doing, and that's it.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Good evening. But I'm T J Stewart and fifty three fifty three Main Street. I'm a really unique business owner in the Village of Williamsville because ninety nine percent of my income comes from other states, which means almost a hundred percent of my tax dollars goes to a village that I take no services from. My lawyers are in the village. My captains are in the village. My staff supports the restaurants in the village. COVID was great for us. All right. We developed a new product during COVID, which was, which was nuts. Everyone who's seen our product has all told us we're an easy hundred, three hundred million dollar company in the next three to five years. Why should I stay here? That's my question. That's my question. Why should I stay in this village when everybody's telling me what I have to do, what I don't have to do, or what my kids can or can't do to enjoy a livelihood in this village, in this county, and in this state? I have customers, the majority of my customers are in Texas, Kentucky, Tennessee, and then that, some in Florida. I can tell you firsthand, the livelihood and enjoyment of life in those states is excelling compared to what I have to endure, my family has to endure here. So I ask this board, why should I stay here? Thank you.
I was here last month or less, four weeks.
Just take your name and address.
Nicole Weinstein, five oh five North Forest. Um, sadly, my youngest couldn't come with me tonight. And she was really upset because she really was integral with the last meeting I was here. Um, and I told her I would represent her. So I'm here tonight to say that last month we came because we were very upset. We are a huge part of Williamsville. We love it. And we fully support Doug, Mayor Doug. She has our best interest at needs. We are freedom of rights. This town needs us. We walk our landscape, right? So I've been riding a bike with my kids since they've been little. Uh, the, the rock, the Williamsville front. And we can go into a shop, we can go out of a shop. Not unless we are fully masked or fully vaxxed. And that's not okay. That's not okay. It should be freedom of choice. And this is what we came last month. My youngest, she's twelve. She cried. She sat here crying in front of the board. And it needs to be acknowledged. We need to be acknowledged. It's not okay. We need to have freedom of choice. Thank you, Mayor Doug. We appreciate your freedom of knowledge and we thank you. Like it's, it's time, it's time. It's, it is just time for freedom of speech and freedom of choice.
Anyone else?
Good evening, members of the board, Nelson Torrey, one oh nine North Ellicott. Uh, unlike a number of the last several speakers, I actually live in the village of Williamsville. Not East Ambers, not the town Ambers, but no, in the village. So it's nice to have all these folks taking the opportunity of a public square to express their opinions, their thoughts, their wants. But let's be honest, the state of the New York passed the mask mandate. The state of New York, uh, has passed some vaccine mandates. The county of Erie has done the same. So this may be entertaining, but it has nothing to do with what the gil- village is empowered to uh, change, to enact, to override. Every resident of this village and every business in this village has to follow the law of the land. We may not be happy with it. But we may not know everything and we may not know better than those who are charged with the public safety and health of this state. So I ask all those who want to shout freedom from the rooftops, that's fine. But you don't have the power to change it. So go to Albany and protest or go to County Hall and protest. But as far as having any effect here, you've had none. Because you have no power here and have no power to change us. So you might as well go down to Niagara Square and put on a fur hat, paint your face blue and do your protesting there for all good it will do to protest here. Hold on for office time. And that's fine. And nobody will fault you for doing so. And I want you to do. And I don't say I agree with it or don't agree with it. But I do know who makes the rules. And it's not this board.
Oh, and it's not.
Okay, one more time, please. So if you want to make any further public comments, I yield my time. But I only speak to reality and the truth. And I respect Mayor Rogers having your personal view of masks and the interference it causes. I know the court system where I work virtually closed down for the better part of a year. And now it's limping along, a backlog of cases that you couldn't believe. Because we can't put a jury in the box and witnesses have to testify from behind plexiglass and masks. So it's disrupted all of our lives. But those who recognize who makes the rules and who has the power to change those rules are not going to whine about it. So I only say that we should all look at each other as members of the same community. And maybe not be so harsh and recognize what you can change, go out and change. What you want to speak about, speak about. But don't cast blame where blame does not fall. That's all.
Thank you.
Um, I've got um, an issue on another topic.
Oh, yeah, no, no, another topic.
Change the subject.
Break it up a little bit, I think.
Only three minutes.
Give you three minutes.
Bill's board, my name is Thomas Frank. I reside at five four oh three Main Street. And I'd like to talk about the comment that you made about the CFA, the consolidated funding, and the LWRP for an MOU for the Zoom, the memorandum of understanding between the village and the town. Um, regarding the villages, community, the LWRP for the community outreach plan, that it should be extended for, uh, as far as the comprehensive plan should be adjusted, um, for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Because it relates to some other larger issues that Governor Hokel covered in their State of the State address. And also uh, the climate change, uh, infrastructure issues, that are going to be included in the president's State of the Union address in February. And it relates to, for the, um, what I'm speaking about is the Elecott Creek watershed, Greenling, the Amher Central Park, uh, trails and historic preservation, um, for the region. And um, and this had started some time ago with Senator Mary Lou Raff, um, back in two thousand and five regarding a statewide, um, plan for tourism, recreation, and sports development. As far as tying it into the education system. That, uh, but also, I mean, um, I've only got three minutes for nine planned issues, uh, related to the comprehensive, all-inclusive master bicentennial plans for the village and the town and the region, um, regarding a statewide, um, plan, uh, and initiative, uh, that, uh, the major issues extend through two thousand and fifty. And they're a part of, um, see in two thousand and twenty-five, you got the bicentennial of the Erie Canal, the National Heritage Corridor. That's one of the most, uh, uh, where the canal comes into Tonalanda Creek is one of the most historic locations in the country. And, um, so you're going to have to do a little planning as far as, the reason why the village was incorporated in eighteen fifty was to connect Elec- Creek to the canal. So, um, that this is also a part of the relicensing of the Niagara Power Project. As far as the four hundred and fifty million dollars that they allocated to for the adjustment, uh, to mitigate the cumulative negative impact of the power generation on the watershed. The Elecott Creek watershed, and this is a part of the IJC, the International Joint Commission, a treaty, uh, going back to nineteen oh nine, between the United States and Canada. See, I only covered six issues. Um,
Well, if you want to cover the other three at the next meeting.
Okay, there's only one, one more that I'd like to mention, and that's the, um, uh, how this ties into the theme of.
Yes, your time is up and I need to stick to three minutes. But thank you, Tom.
Water table and flood insurance that FEMA is not going to pay for.
Thank you.
Um, you're welcome.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to setting up an appointment with you two.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Samantha Trojan, one sixty-eight, my phone. Um, first of all, I want to thank all, all of you for having an in-person meeting. I know that town of Ambers is not doing that. So thank you for. I just want to address one thing. I'll be quick today. Um, on Wednesday, December first, there was an email from the former deputy mayor that went, for some reason, only to Ms. Tor and Ms. Hunt. Um, where he said, um, it's only the A-holes who can't have their rights trampled on and who take their misplaced aggression on the poor whipping work of steps who are the problem. Um, I just want to reiterate that he called some of his constituents A-holes who can't have their rights trampled on. Um, but there was no response from you two, which leaves me to think that the silence means you agree. Um, I just want you to know that we do care very much about our rights. We care very, very much about our rights. Thank you.
Do you recall that anymore? No, I don't.
I'd like to see.
Yeah, I'd like to see it too, actually. Oh, thank you. Although, you know what? I actually have one of those. So, yeah. Thank you. Was this with the, that toy over five?
Hi. So my name is John Ariel. I live at fifty-seven fifty-four Main Street. I do live in the village of Maine, uh, in the village here of Williamsville. Um, I handed all of you a constitution because there is in the constitution, the fourth amendment. What the fourth amendment says is the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated and no warrants shall issued but upon probable cause supported by the oath or affirmation and particularly describing the place to be searched and the person or things to be seized. So the, the reason I decided to come back this week is because I was horrified that at the end of the last meeting, you all couldn't come to a unanimous decision to come out with a statement against vaccine mandates. I, I'd love to ask you all, do you intend to hold me down and stick a needle in me? That's, that's the question I have. Really simple, because there was a time where, where it wasn't done in the United States, but there is a time fairly recent history where they did that, speaking, right? Well, my guess is the people who are unwilling to stand up, uh, and, and voice their opposition to that probably think they're the type who would have stood up to the Nazis. Meanwhile, that's exactly what you're proposing you have done to your neighbors. I'm, I'm asking you all that if January fifteenth, if Erie County, New York State do impose a vaccine mandate, that you loudly oppose it. Stand with your neighbors in the village of Williamsville. Thank you.
Want to clarify, um, you're, you're absolutely right. For those who weren't here at the last meeting, we did put forth a resolution, um, opposing a vaccine mandate. And myself, uh, trustee Sherman, and former deputy mayor E. Two actually voted in favor of that. So it was a three to two vote. Um, I will continue to, to stand against that as well. And I would also just like to clarify for everybody who's been speaking and a couple of comments in here. Um, a mandate is not a law. I'm not a legal person, but um, I can tell you that there are two entirely different. You talk about a lot of the land, um, that's really an inaccurate statement in every sense of its core and being. Um, because they are too separate. If there's an attorney in here, perhaps they can, you know, elaborate on that. But I just want to make that clarification that that does exist. Um, you know, there are two separate things that we're talking about here. So without further ado, anyone else who would like to comment? In the room, if not, we'll go back to Zoom. Okay. All right. So Keaton, is there anyone who would like to comment?
I put the call out twice for anybody who may want to raise their hand and or just answer in the chat.
Okay.
And I didn't ever see anybody. Um, we do have some words from Joan Siemens in the chat. Uh, however, she already spoke once, so.
Right, right.
Um, I didn't want to just put those out there because she already had an opportunity. Um, but we will give one last chance to anybody. Uh, you can either put your uh, hand up, raise your hand in the, in Zoom, or just let me know by uh, telling us in chat that you would like to address the board. Give you a few seconds here. Anybody at all? Still forty-one participants.
All right.
I guess that's all.
Okay, so, um, one. Sure.
So having been, um, Holocaust survivors, my family, and, um, dealing with what we're dealing with right now. So I'm giving my kids the opportunity to, uh, choice. And we're now faced to mask up. We are faced to almost be injected with a, um, uh, experimental in- injection. And these are times where we give our kids who have maybe suffered or not suffered. And we are now, you know, exposed to all these things. And it's, it's just not okay anymore. And my kids are so upset. It's so upsetting to have these rules and indoctrinations. And if we're, uh, exposed to COVID and not, but like at some point, we need to give, we need to be given a choice. And thank God for Deborah. She's giving us a freedom, a freedom of choice. Like we sit in the scales, we're unsure of things. And we're unsure, we need to have people who have our voice. And thank God for Mayor Doug. Thank you.
And I know, I, I just want to just say, because I, I'm sure that I'm going to get some, some pushback or complaints about it. Um, the reason I let Ms. Weinstein come and speak is because she was on the Zoom call. And you obviously, um, were having difficulty. There was a woman, Sue Fencer, who tried to get you in, but there was something going on. So, um, you did get in your car and drive here. So, um, I think the least we can do is afford you, um, that time to come up a second time. I, I won't be allowing anybody else to comment a second time, but knowing that you drove here, I just wanted to extend that courtesy. So thank you for, for driving out.
Uh, fairness, Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Read Joan Siemens' comments. As I, as I find out, she'd already had an opportunity to speak, but as.
Sure, that's fine. Sure.
Out of fairness, um, she would like to appeal to the mayor trustees to pause on voting on the anti-mandate resolution until the board has done its due diligence and spoken to all business owners in the village as well as our residents. Otherwise, it feels like a little like taxation without representation is what she would like to tell the board. So thank you, everybody, for, uh, telling us to read Joan's comments. That was always the plan. This meeting is being moderated very fairly. So thank you.
Yep. Okay. Is there anyone else commenting? If not, we're going to close everything out for public participation. And we'll move on to reports and resolutions. Good, Keaton?
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. So, um, I will make a motion to close the suspension of rules for public participation. All in favor? And we'll get right into reports and resolutions. Are you going to put those up on the screen? Are you able to? Um, because I will like to make a motion to move. Because I would like to make a motion to move resolutions number one, two, and three, as they appear on the agenda. Making a motion to approve resolutions one, two, and three, as they appear on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Hi. Resolution number four resolved that Christine Petrie is hereby appointed to the zoning board of appeals until the end of the 2021, 2022 official village year. All in favor? Okay, resolution five, which is the one that everybody seems to be discussing this evening, so I'm going to read that one for everyone who's here. Whereas the village board of the village of Williamsville, New York, the village board recognizes that the COVID-19 virus will likely never be eradicated due to its mutations, and that by managing it through declaring a state of emergency and declaring mandates every time a new variant and/or spike in cases arises must not continue. And whereas the village board recognizes the negative impact on mental and societal health, schools, businesses, residents' rights and freedoms due to state of emergency declarations, mask mandates, vaccine mandates, and lockdowns. And whereas the village board recognizes that actions associated with vaccine mandates in the healthcare field have resulted in decreased capacity due to job terminations and severely limits the ability to hire and fill positions due to unvaccinated hiring restrictions, thereby increasing rather than mitigating the virus's risk to our community. And whereas the village board recognizes that a long-term management plan is required to manage the COVID-19 virus, and that Erie County and New York State should be proactively addressing hospital capacity issues that impact the health and well-being of our residents instead of suspending certain procedures. And whereas the village board questions why Erie County is one of the only counties in New York that renewed every 30 days the COVID-19 state of emergency since March 15, 2020. It is our belief that further extensions are not justified. And whereas the village board supports proposed legislation in the New York State Senate that would require approval by village, town, and city governing boards and any county executives or county health boards' extension of a state of emergency beyond 30 days within their village, town, or city. And whereas the village board recognizes that the COVID-19 virus has become a long-term global endemic disease, and requests that our village residents, businesses, and schools have the right to determine for themselves their unique requirements for mitigating risks, and the village board respectfully requests that New York State and Erie County not enter the village of Williamsville for the purpose of enforcement of their COVID mandates or associated restrictions. And whereas the village board supports similar concerns from other village and town leaders, such as those serving in Akron, Marilla, West Seneca, and Grand Island, whom are also respectfully requesting New York State and Erie County refrain from entering their villages for the purpose of enforcement of COVID mandates and/or associated restrictions. Now therefore be it resolved that the village board goes on record opposing any further New York State and Erie County mask mandates, vaccine mandates, and other COVID-19 restrictions, and the village board opposes their associated enforcement by outside agencies within the village of Williamsville. And be it further resolved that the Williamsville village clerk shall forward certified copies of this resolution to the governor of the state of New York, Kathy Hochul, Senator Edward Raff the Third, Assemblywoman Karen McMahon, county executive Mark Pollin Cars, legislator Jeanne Vinal, and others as deemed necessary and appropriate. And at this time, I would need a second, and then I would ask for a roll call vote.
Second.
Minister Kenyon, would you do a roll call vote, please?
I'd just like to say that unfortunately, a pandemic has led to controversies in the communities, in the communities here, in the communities in the world. It's led to controversy in families. The whole purpose is for the good of the public, the public health, is for the good of the people to follow these mandates. This virus, this pandemic, the doctor or scientist, but I'd be a great hero's play on it, so let's do this. It's just what we have to deal with. It's not, is anybody that's fun dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic? Harry doubt that. It's difficult, difficult for everyone. And I appreciate all of your comments, both for and against the mandate, and I understand your concerns. I understand both sides. I have received several emails since last night. We have lots of folks here. We have lots of individuals in the community, including those on Zoom, that feel different ways. I represent, and was elected to represent the community as a whole, the psychos. While I understand everybody's view, I vote no. I will not vote for this resolution. We have very trusting issues just within our community, our one square miles, that really will benefit all of our constituents, and those are the things I would like to focus my kind of energy on. Thank you.
Just a second.
So I also understand this is a divided issue. And you're never going to change people's minds, right? It's been two years now, and you know, the folks have been and not been vaccinated, probably won't ever be vaccinated, right? There's nothing you can do to change the mind at this point. You know, so the thing I like about this resolution is it kind of meets in the middle, right? So it empowers businesses to make their own mandates, right? It isn't a top-down kind of thing like the state keeps doing to us, or the county keeps doing to us, right? A business owner is able to set their own rules, you know? If they don't want people to enter without masks, because they're on the door, and I would pray that people respect that. If they want anyone to enter without a mask, God bless, right? You know, each business has their own level of risk, and they know their customers. They know maybe it'll affect them positively, maybe negatively. But let's give them that choice, right? Why make rules that divide so much? So I vote yes.
Justice, third.
Okay, I will also like to say something before I cast my vote. As a village government, we do not have control over any mandates issued by the state or county, and we must always comply and abide by all orders that are set forth by the state, county, and our local health department of New York State. New York State and the New York Department, New York State Department of Health have expended enormous resources to study and understand the public health issues that have taken the lives of over 60,000 New Yorkers. And we should not second-guess those authorities with our own personal opinions. This village board needs to concentrate on the business of the village residents, including their health and safety, and not waste time grandstanding politically to gain favor for a very vocal minority. We should be thankful for how far we have come from the early days of this pandemic, when everything was dark and shuttered. Thanks to the mandates and vaccinations, we're able to be with our loved ones again. Let me end by saying it is not wise to play politics with our health, and my vote is no.
I've said this before up here, to anyone who would listen, that as a volunteer firefighter for 40 years, if I told you some of the stuff we did in the 80s at emergency calls, you'd be horrified. We had no protection. The only protection we had was, don't forget your gloves. However, right to this minute, the Erie County Department of Emergency Services has not mandated or even instructed any fire department that I know of. There's 93 fire, volunteer fire companies in Erie County. Has said, "You must do this. You must do that." It's left to the jurisdiction of the chief of that department, and the five of us as village trustees are actually fire commissioners of the Williamsville Fire Department. And I think if we were to mandate that every Williamsville fireman wear a mask or be vaccinated, I think that would be very detrimental to serving people. And all I can say is every time that door goes up downstairs, the men and women who are on those trucks, they understand the risk. And when there's a note on the fire hall door that says you have to wear a mask in the fire hall, whether you're going over old records, or you're washing the truck, or whatever you're doing. And if you're in the apparatus, you have to wear a mask. The word mandate has never surfaced downstairs. It's by order of the chief of the department. And I just can't see putting that burden of mandatory vaccination, mandatory mask. It's a personal choice. I've been doing it for years, long before this, because in the 80s, we were worried about AIDS. We were worried about bloodborne pathogens. And, you know, we took great steps to protect ourselves and therefore everyone else against those things. So I will vote yes.
So first of all, I want to thank everyone for their comments tonight, and regardless of what anyone will say about me, and I know they say a lot, is that I do like hearing both sides. I think that that's what makes our country so great, that we do offer, afford, this country, something called freedom of speech. Certainly, it's not afforded in all countries, and if the border crossings are any indication of how bad things are in those other countries, that speaks volumes for itself, that we have so many people wanting to come to our country. That aside, you know, I just, for those who say that this has nothing to do with the village of Williamsville and the residents, I think you are completely wrong and utterly foolish, because it absolutely does have something to do with everyone who's sitting in this room and everyone who lives in this village. The mandates will eventually touch your life in some way. And initially, when the mask mandate came out, it wasn't that, to be honest, wasn't that big of a deal to me. Initially, when the pandemic started, and I believe Mr. Watson, you had asked me this in an interview, I was fine. I did wear a mask everywhere. We now are getting information that the only masks that does work for the Omicron are the N95s, and I noticed two of the trustees are wearing the correct mask up here, the clop and surgical ones that we've all been told work. They are pretty much admitting on all the national news channels, not just Fox News, that they don't work, and they're not effective against Omicron. So when the narrative changes and the science changes, we should pivot as well. For whatever reason, that doesn't seem to be happening here in New York State. So I am going to sit up here as an elected, you're damned straight, and I'm going to question everything that comes out as an elected official, and I'm not doing it to be divisive. I'm doing it to stand up for freedoms and rights. I do not want to see a vaccine mandate enforced on anyone who isn't comfortable taking it. We have never done that in the history of this country, and I don't know why we would start now. And if you look at those VAERS reports, those are something that if you have it, you should go online and you should Google search it and read some of those reports. So I think the only way to get past this is if we can all choose to agree that we have differing points, and instead of doing mandates, we bring up freedom of choice for everyone to choose whether or not you want to wear a mask, what kind of mask you want to wear, whether or not you want to be vaccinated or not as well. And that is the only way we're going to get past this ever. If we continue to hand down the mandates, this gentleman over here spoke about why should I stay in New York? I can't answer your question, because I can't give you a good reason at this point to stay here in New York. You're absolutely right, this gentleman behind you. And for, you know, people are moving out of the state statistically. I'm sure somebody can Google it and see the people who are leaving. The owners over here who spoke, I know that, you know, you are also struggling with whether or not you want to stay, and there is a vibrant business right on our main street that may possibly close up, and then we're left with another vacancy. So it does absolutely affect all of us. That is why we will continue to talk about it. We were also getting other village business handled at the same time. Nothing is being neglected. Nothing is being thrown by the wayside. We will continue to do all things for all of our residents. And with that, I will vote yes for the resolution number five. I do need to make a motion to go off agenda for a resolution involving William Shutt and Associates. Do I have a second? Second. Okay. So this is to deal with some additional costs that we're going to be incurring regarding drainage and under drainage costs with our paving projects for 2022. Resolve that the finalized scope of work for William Shutt and Associates for engineering services related to design fees that require additional work to the 2022 cold milling with hot asphalt replacement project, storm drainage improvement, and gutter installation project. Additional fees are hereby approved in the amount of $6,500 for the production of bid documents hyphen plans and specs. So do I have a second?
What would be original cost? The original proposal, was it five dollars?
No, Ben, you have to.
Eleven?
Eleven, was it one?
Yeah, it was eleven, no.
Where is this going?
It's I'm agenda, so we can give you a copy of it if you want. No, no, I'm done reading it. Judy's got extra copies. So it's just some additional positive. And you thought they were fair, the costs, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. The scope of the project has unfortunately crept. It's a little bit more complicated than we initially anticipated due to the presence of rock and the lack of quality of infrastructure that's currently existing. We're going to have to do some more replacements than initially anticipated, and all of that takes more time on the other side.
Okay. Okay, do I have a second? Second? All in favor? I.
I'm going to abstain just because I don't understand.
You're bringing up speed.
Yeah.
It's.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'll make a motion then to return to the agenda. Second. All in favor? And for reports this evening, I just wanted to mention the passing of a longtime village volunteer, Mr. Joseph Breeze. I know Deputy Mayor Sherman and I attended his memorial celebration, and I think you're going to offer some words as well. So I'm not going to say too much, but, you know, it's funny, because we sit up here and we have a lot of volunteers on different committees, and, you know, you never maybe really know the whole life of that person unless maybe you're a neighbor or a close friend of that individual. And I have to say, I was really touched and moved by the ceremony and the lives that he touched so much. The fire department was there, and just so many people had so many kind and thoughtful words to say about him. And I guess my only regret is that I didn't know, as well as perhaps you did, Dave. And so I'll just leave it at that, but I just did want to, you know, extend a remembrance for him this evening. And that's it for me for reports and resolutions, and I will turn it over to Deputy Mayor Sherman for his reports and resolutions.
Out of order a little bit, but yeah, Joe Breeze was one in a million, from the village side of things. When he was on this board, he sponsored the project to build and install a modern replacement bell tower on the Williamsville meeting house. When the Matthews and McCarthy Little League needed a better place to store lawn equipment and such trivial things as bases, he helped design a modern snack bar up front to make the baseball experience better for all of our families. And there's a lot of stories about Joe, some of which are best left unrecorded, but just a funny guy. And I know he was grumpy at times and gruff, but we sat next to each other at fire department board meetings at least for the last four years. And if he had a question, he'd lean over and ask me. If I had a question, I'd lean over and ask him. But just be, you had to take this, Derek Castrenova was here, and if he was here, I'd just thank him for leading that service in such an uplifting way for the family. But lastly, I'll say that just before every monthly meeting would start, Joe would open his phone and show me the latest photos of his grandkids. I currently do not have any grandchildren, so. So I would open up mine and show him photos of me with President Biden, me with Governor Walco, me with Mayor Byron Brown. And I'm a lifelong Republican. So this drove Joe right up the tree. So thank you for that opportunity, Mayor Rogers. Thank you for coming. Okay, Sherman number one, whereas the next village election will be held on June 21st, 2022, and whereas the office is to be filled and the terms thereof are as follows. Two trustees for a term of one year each. Therefore be resolved administration is administrator is hereby authorized to publish a legal notice designated the date of the election, the office is to be filled and the terms thereof in the January 19th, 2022, Amherst be. Have a second?
Second.
I thought one of the trustees will be for one year. It's two years and then two years later, it's, it's two trustees. And two years later, it's two trustees, the judge and.
Twenty-three, yeah, same as, yeah, exactly. Do we get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Number two, whereas the next village election is to be held on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. And whereas the hours of voting shall be from 12 noon to 9:00 PM, therefore being resolved that the village has one election district, which includes the entire area of the municipal boundaries of the Village of Williamsville. And be it further resolved that the sole polling place of holding such election shall be at the Williamsville Village Hall, 5565 Main Street.
Second, all in favor?
So that's because we won't utilize the meeting house anymore, yes?
No, we never use it for village elections.
Just for the, are we still going to use it for the other elections? I'm just curious.
Yeah. Okay, and next for her reports and resolutions is Trustee Hunt.
We resolve that the request of the historic preservation commission, the village board approves the proposal from the Aurora Arts Conservation for the evaluation of the Virgin Lover mural at the Bank of America Building, 55 coming nine Main Street, Williamsville, to aid in future preservation of the mural at a cost of $5,400.
Okay, on the question on that, what, what is that I have?
It's to get an idea of exactly what the mural is, how it is constructed, whether it's canvas on the wall, whether it is in the plaster. To get a, our conservation is to give them, give them, end of the, um, a, an analysis of exactly what it is. The, it has been approved by the HBC. It's already been appropriated, the monies are appropriated in their funds. And it will not, where, they just want to know if it should come to a point where it, we may want to move it exactly what it is, or they may want to move it or, or preserve it, what the cost is, because we really don't know what it's, it is, how it is painted onto the wall.
Can they give an estimate of how much it's worth or anything as well, or is it just structural?
So can we, because it's a privately owned building, can we expend our village funds for that at a privately owned building?
The building is.
The Bank of America is privately owned right now. It's no longer Bank of America, it's been closed, and some, some private person bought it. So I guess that's my question.
I mean, I don't know exactly what this thing.
Well, I just need to know if we can expend $400 to, for, for building.
Why do you need to spend its funds for plaques or?
We have, yeah, I just want to make sure that it's, okay. I mean, so that's okay, I'm fine with it.
The owner would have to approve us doing this, right?
They have.
Okay, as long as you don't see a problem with the owner.
Yeah, they're in agreement.
Who is the owner? Is that public knowledge?
We can, we don't need to discuss it now. Second. I seconded.
Well, I'm just making sure that we can do that. I just, if Chip says it's okay, I'm fine with the expenditure of HBC.
Yeah, because I know, I know Mrs. Loether spoke to the owners and was given permission to enter the building, to take pictures of it, to look at the mural more closely. She had other people with her, so it was under discussion. And perhaps if the current owner does not want to retain the mural, he will give it to the Village of Williamsville. That's the idea.
And where would we put that mural exactly?
Possibly in the meeting house? Beautiful, it's absolutely beautiful, or in here? It's beautiful.
That's my fear, I don't know if it's like a canvas.
Well, that's why we need somebody to.
Or I, I always thought it was painted into the wall.
No, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, it looks that way though.
Chip, if you, if you're good with it.
I, I'm not, I, I mean, it's, it's no different than
Okay.
Or, or that manner doing. Not like your paint, your, this is for the village's preservation purpose, it's not necessarily the kind of thing that the owners would say with you. I don't know.
Okay, all right, so Tori seconded, all in favor? And next for reports and resolutions is Trustee Tori.
Yes, I have two resolutions tonight. Resolve that the village board of trustees hereby approve the Volunteer Firefighter Service Award Program list of all 2021 active volunteer firefighters for the Village of Williamsville and hereby authorizes the mayor and the village board to sign their authorization for Penn Flex Incorporated to use the data submitted for the 2021 records. Second, all in favor?
I will recuse myself since it's a financial situation.
Right, but we discussed that when he was here, remember? Yeah, okay. I, good, all in favor? Resolution number two, resolve that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the Village of Williamsville contracts with the town of Amherst and Williamsville Fire Department, Hudson Ho's Company for fire protection for the year 2022 in the following districts. Autumn Harvest District One, Lamb Post District Two, Lane Springs District Three, Mill Street District Four, Park Club Lane District 15, and Williamsville Sheridan District 16. All in favor?
Question.
Yeah.
I thought that was not Park Club Lane, but Park Club District 15, because that was just the club. The Park Club itself, I don't think it's Park Club Lane. I don't have the copy of.
So you think Park Club District 15 is the Park Club itself?
Correct.
Because it's not on Park Club Lane, so then therefore you are correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've signed that so many times, but I'm pretty sure it's not.
I think you're right.
So get rid of Lane.
Get rid of Lane, yes.
Okay, um, did we have a second on it? Back to the second, all in favor?
Aye. And I have no reports for tonight, thank you.
And Trustee Carson? All right, so staff reports this evening. We're going to get back in a work session, I've got some things to go over with you, so. Okay, anything else? Okay, we did hold executive session earlier, so that's all set. And I'll make a motion to adjourn the board meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then let's pick up where we left off at work session. So work session, we talked about the Isklo property lease, we decided we're going to put that on ice, right? I, I will give a call tomorrow. Okay, South Lawn Park, there's lots to talk about. So, um, one of the things I wanted to talk about is, and I think I mentioned the three things that we are going forward with this year. The large pavilion, the, you know, tables to go underneath the pavilion, the tennis court slash court and the basketball court. And those courts are going to run parallel to South Lawn Street, correct?
That was the plan.
Yes, because we put the oak grove of the trees along where the DPW building, we flip-flop those two things. So, and then the pavilion is going to go where the existing basketball court is currently.
That was the indicated, yes.
Okay, and we're going to leave the children's playset in place for now where it currently is, because that is in good working order, we had that expected. It's, it's going to stay until we can get it replaced with something newer.
Yeah, I guess that, that is the attempt.
Right, okay, so, so why, and the reason I'm going over this is because you're new to this, right? There's been a lot of sketches and drawings with, thank you, with things going around where things are being placed over there. So I just want to make sure that we're all on board for those things. I know we have enough money in the park assignments, I had Judy get some numbers for that. And I know we have enough to cover those items. So between now and budget time, we are going to have to talk about what else we want to knock off for park improvements and what we're willing to expend on those, you know, going forward. What other amenities, if any, are we putting in at South Lawn at this point?
Will we see the amounts that we have?
Yeah, so, well, I have some rough numbers here, so I can read these. So in park assignments, right now, we have 319, 319,269. The capital reserve balance for the 2022 budget is 110,237. So that gives a grand total of 429,506. And I have some just rough numbers of, you know, what the sports courts are going to cost. We said about $200,000, does that sound right? And the pavilion, we thought about 35. Maybe more, if we, well, if we're putting in tables, we're going to add about another 10.
Yep.
So what, we could call that 45 or 50, just to be on the safe side, because there might be increased costs with concrete.
Yeah, escalation.
Okay. And then we did have, we did talk about doing two updates at Island Park, getting the pavilion painted, which we thought was about 25,000, just a whole repaint of the pavilion. And then the pavilion screen, which is the, getting rid of the latticework and using that aluminum screen with like some type of leaf design or, or branch design. Or I don't think we finalized what kind of design it was going to be. So those items would total about $35,000. Is what I had.
I haven't seen anything on this aluminum screen, so I have no idea.
I'm going on a sheet that Deputy Mayor E2 left, so I have files.
Was it aluminum though, yeah?
I don't, maybe I'm describing it wrong.
Yeah, I don't think it was, because I saw the design. Because it was actually very, very, very pretty. Yeah, it was like wood trees.
Like leaf, yeah, yeah, lovely. And I'm probably using the wrong term, it probably isn't.
It was actually wood.
Well, I don't know. Yeah, but we know, we, we did look at it, and it was a very durable substance, whatever it was. It was going to go up there, it was going to last, and it wasn't going to need maintenance and painting.
Do you know what the cost of that was by any chance?
Well, I have here for the pavilion screen, 10,000.
Yeah, because it was expensive, yeah.
Is it exact by any chance, is that something?
Oh, it might be.
It's like, it's like a plastic composite that you don't have to make.
Oh, okay, I think that is, does sound familiar, is that. So, so we can, my, my thought is, I'd like to sit down with Trustee Carson and you then, and kind of go through all of the park stuff that we have, get rid of like old plans that are, you know, are no longer in play and really talk about layout there. We know what we're doing for phase one, what do we want to see over there for phase two? So when we sit down for our budget meeting, we can say, this is what we were looking at doing there for phase two. We have X amount of dollars left, we need this amount from the budget, see, you know, this year thrown in, and then we can finish with phase two. So that's just what I was thinking, you know, we'll just take it step by step.
And we're going to get this done in 2022?
Well, we definitely have on, to get things done, the, the three things I mentioned, the sport court, the tennis courts and the pavilion. Those are all budgeted for, we should be able to get those in, right?
Are we talking about the pavilion at South Lawn or?
Pavilion at South Lawn. Because, and at the same time, doing, in tandem, doing Island Park as well.
Yeah, because I, I know we want to dedicate the Island Park Pavilion to a certain someone, and I'd like to do that sooner than later.
Well, it's on, it's on, the Parks Committee wants it, we do have money budgeted, I think we should be able to cover it. We just need to finalize what the design's going to be and, you know, I guess write a check and.
Well, we have our piece out there, so we have, we have proposal, so we know.
Not yet.
And so we need to get everybody's calendar.
We need to put these out to bid so that we have a good idea of what they will cost.
Yeah.
They might be pushing this out for 2023.
Well, Ben, you were going to work on getting the proposals out, right? So you will get those out, like.
As soon as humanly possible.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't have a design for pavilion, so.
We put these out to bid?
We put them out last year to bid, and we didn't get a response, so we should have all the same bid stuff.
Did Matt have a design?
Matt had a written, like a narrative description of pavilion.
It's, um, there's a stack of stuff in the office there, so that's why I want to sit down the three of us and go through all of that.
So the, the sport courts, I have documents, that's easy. The screen, again, I, I.
It's all, it's all over there.
I don't know what it's made out of, I don't know if it's a proprietary thing. So I gotta look at that. And again, the pavilion, we're going to rehash what that actually looks like. And then putting together a specification for painting of the pavilion. Which one's easy?
No, we're going to do it all in tandem, we're going to sit down and we're going to figure this out. All the groundwork's been laid, I just need to sit down with these two and go through the files and get it going. Yeah, so.
And then can, can we see those figures in there as well? I try to write them.
Yeah, yeah, you can hear, I mean, it's just, yeah, I just wanted to track. Thank you. Okay. So that's our direction that we're heading. So if you have some time this week, and Matt, if you do, I'd like to sit down this week and go through that.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, reach out to both of you tomorrow about the time that we can all meet. Okay, so any other talk on South Lawn Park? Anybody want to add anything before I move on?
No, but I'm happy we're going forward with it, that's for sure.
Yeah, absolutely, why wouldn't we? We got it budgeted, we got everything ready to go, you know. The Parks Committee's been talking about this for a long time, and, you know, they've kind of chimed in what they would like to see, so, yeah, we're going to.
Is that court also going to be, can be used for pickleball?
I believe it could be used.
It can be, because it's very popular right now.
Yeah, it's going to be in that, that you can.
You don't like pickleball?
No.
Yeah, why?
Yep.
I see everybody playing it with the Y, I'm like, wow, I'm impressed.
Any other comments on, on those items? We'll sit down and we'll have a more detailed plan in our next meeting, our second meeting in January, once the three of us sit down. Okay, all right. Um, the fitness court grant, we decided we're putting that on, off, you know, indefinitely. The Island Park Pavilion mural, I wanted to talk about this because I do want to get this off the ground, and I would like to see a mural painted on there before the summer. So I know we had talked about doing some type of a call for artists or a contest. And I think that might be something that we should sit down and maybe Keaton, you could help us just get something out as, you know, to the community for, you know, a call for artists. And we would have to speculate, you know, stipulate in there how we want to do this. So, you know, if they're designing it, can they also paint it? Or are they designing it, and then they have someone who's going to paint it? And we should probably talk about a budget of what we're willing to.
And the theme.
And then the theme, we have all of that, so I think.
What's the location?
The back wall of the Island Park Pavilion.
Oh, okay, so facing, yeah.
Facing inside of the pavilion. So I think what we need to do to get this going is everyone's going to have to put together some ideas. And at the next board meeting, let's try to nail down what we want to see and how we want to go about doing this.
Okay, that's fine, I'll look on some.
And let's get something, you know, moving with it.
Because it's going to be one of our destination murals, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Exactly.
So, so everybody's home. So so everybody's homework is to get some ideas down about how they'd like to see this pavilion contest being rolled out. What are some, you know, points that you want the artist to hit, you know? Is there a certain theme or, you know, picture or something that you wanna incorporate into it? All of those things, because that's gonna be important to get that information out.
Okay.
Okay. And um, old business chip, I have those on there, probably no updates based on any of that. Yeah, I know, and I I, at this point, I think it's.
Continue to be.
Exactly, yes, there will, that may be on there indefinitely. Um, okay, and that's um, all I have, so um, Trustee Carson, do you have anything you wanna add or questions you have?
I do not.
Okay. All right, Trustee Hunt?
I have no, I think I did.
Okay.
I do have a question. For Zoom meetings, are they, for the one that we had for um, art and culture, oh, actually, I should say, certification is having a Zoom meeting tomorrow. But for art and culture, are those automatically published into the website? Any Zoom meeting that we have?
Generally, yes, I mean, for, for the arts and culture one, it was more of you just getting uh, together with them. To try to figure out the direction. So for that one, I didn't really post it, cause it was, you know, obviously, it was open to the public, but I didn't post the report. So, cause it was more of what you guys just getting together to decide the direction, what you should do, more than.
I thought I started everything in July.
Yeah, they still have to be, they still have to be uploaded, yes. But I didn't know if it was necessarily a, an organizational meeting or more of just a meeting with a couple of members. That that was what my understanding was. But they didn't have a form of that meeting. So, of of what?
No, you need a form.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
By the way, as far as I know, right now, the authorization.
So you're saying to the fifteenth, and nothing has been extended beyond?
At least last night.
Because I know environmental wants to do, so you know that. Yeah, right, right.
Yes. I mean, you know.
So what what, you know, the governor included that in our, with that order. That expired, the legislature authorized basically an extension of that. And so unless they extend it again.
There are still five days, generally, they wait.
Yeah, they generally.
Very nice day, right? Okay, all right, thank you.
I guess we'll just all get a touch on that.
Yeah, please.
I mean, just feel free, it ended together and all that.
Right.
But uh, we'll take it.
Okay, thanks. Trustee, Deputy Mayor Sherman?
Uh, we've talked about good old Joe Freeze. I know the Youth and Rec meets tomorrow, but I will not be there because we have fire department, reorganizational meeting. And election of officers, but um, been in touch with Amy about that. They are still planning to have, I believe, on the twenty-ninth. Is that a Saturday? Cause I still don't know.
Yes, yes.
Uh, they wanna call it a sledding party. They don't wanna bill it as winterfest. No pony rides, no giraffes.
There's no snow.
Well, it's happened before, you know. Uh, but they're hoping it's a sledding party and they're planning on uh, hot chocolate, uh, timbits or.
I like winterfest.
So I will, I will keep everybody impressed, prized of other things they have.
It was.
Where's it gonna be?
Yeah.
Right, January twenty-nine.
By the, by the nature bills.
By the no pavilion, nature no pavilion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, all right, I wanna make sure that P. Warren knows about this.
I'll make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What's the exact date again? January twenty-ninth?
Saturday the twenty-ninth.
Cause he's always there, watching. We we know. Seriously, every time I drive by there just to check on things, he is there. I said, Pete, do you have a bed in that little room? I think he does. I think Ben, you wanna go and check. I think he does. I shouldn't laugh, cause he's wonderful. I mean, he just checks everything constantly. I love him for it.
He does.
Yeah. But um, my turn, I guess?
Yep.
Okay, update on Pavilion roof? The roof is on, yay. But no gutters yet, which I think they'll do.
They still haven't got back beyond that PTA on that, so.
Yeah, I figured that. Now's not the great time to put them up anyway.
They work throughout the winter, so.
They do?
Oh, yeah, they don't.
But it looks good, you know, the new roof looks good.
I haven't seen a leak, so I don't know what he's talking about.
I think maybe it was just water that swept in by wind that ended up on the floor, cause Pete thought it's a little puddle, but we can't confirm that yet. So we're just washing it closely.
Is this on the No Nature Park?
Yeah, No Nature Pavilion with a beautiful mural. Okay, uh, I got a question. What is going on with this Spring Street right away?
Well, what specifically you're talking about?
Basically, we presented the the new contract, well, whatever we.
So it's interesting that you should ask that.
Yes.
While we've been here at this meeting, I just got an email from your attorney.
No way.
I haven't had a chance really to look at it, but I.
Okay.
Came in about twenty minutes ago. So I will take a look at that and I will report.
Isn't that odd?
Yeah, that is kind of fun, but.
Yes, but yeah, I'd like to know the update where we stand.
No, I heard nothing since we approved it.
For the sale, yeah.
I have a feeling me. Wanted a different price, but I will have to read what she sent me.
Okay, well, then you just update us.
Yep.
Yes, that's great. Thank you very much. But I did, I don't have anything on the second house. Ben, anything new?
So the abatement of the building and uh, associated work to help preserve the exterior coating. Is in process.
Oh, cool.
All of the widgets have been abated. The expansion joints have been cut in the material. We have a little bit of funding left, we're gonna start to do some of the additional uh. Stucco.
Nice.
Repair work, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, it's moving forward. I think the contractor's done a marvelous job.
Awesome.
We're gonna run out of money before it's done, but then we'll pick back up again if we get a reallocation from the CEDPG.
How about any other hookups?
No.
The telehookup type things, nothing. That's not gonna happen for, right, no, not now anyway. But eventually, once they finish, they have to finish that.
Um, yeah, I mean, I've been told that they won't be a CFO.
Yep.
Until they do the work that's required.
Right, so we can't forget that.
We're not, Tim's on it and we know.
Okay.
Part of the lens walk, they should have already done the work.
Oh, a year ago, we know that.
So now they, it's, when they need it, they'll do it. Yeah. When they need their ZO. Units are for sale.
I know.
Pretty soon, it's going to come. Well, they also, of course. Yeah. They are also buying garbage totes, so.
Garbage totes?
Oh, yeah.
Where they gonna put garbage totes?
It sounds like people are getting ready to move it.
Oh, wow. Okay. That's crazy, cause you can't even drive in there unless you, I mean, it's a mess. All right, um, then you have a comment I have, and I don't know, please, you can help me, Deb. I, when Trustee E two left, he was liaison to certain committees. Now, I was just curious why they went automatically to Trustee Carson. Is that normal?
Historically, that's what we always do.
Always do, because what if he really doesn't wanna do all of these? There's not like a, we can share or.
Well, he doesn't really have a choice.
Really? I mean, that's really, cause all these particular committees are overwhelming for somebody who is new to the village.
Not, actually, not really, and this is something I, a kind of a issue I need to address with Chip.
We have to know, we have to know.
No, 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 this is an issue I need to address with Chip and a fallacy of this board. When I was liaison to the planning board, okay? Many moons ago, when I came in as trustee, I used to sit in that backseat right back there. And I never said two words during the meeting, because I was always told as trustee. That by New York State law, I was not in any way to influence the seated members of the planning board. That's was always I was told by, when when Brian Popple was mayor, they just said, you go to the meeting, you take in what's happening. If the board has an administrative question or um, something that I need to bring back to the board. I jot down a note, and then when I come to the board reading, I bring any questions. I I was not to be running the meeting or conducting.
No, I know that.
So there really, the role for for trustee Carson here is to going to be, to sit in that that backseat. And observe the meeting, and if there are issues that come up, that would involve a trustee being involved, because we do have our attorney present. So the attorney would knowingly take care of any issues pertaining to the planning board. But if it's a housekeeping or an administrative issue, that would be something the trustee Carson then would take. So I'm not sure what Deputy Mayor E two was doing at those meetings. I heard he spent a lot of time talking at them. And I'm not sure sure why exactly that is, cause I was always under the impression that the trustee liaison role was something different.
No, I didn't see him talking.
Is that the case? What is the?
No.
Say, if New York State law doesn't say anything about. Position of liaison. Almost all municipal governing boards do assign liaisons, just. But that's simply a practice, it's not, there is no New York State law. But I would say that a member of a governing board should not interfere.
That's what I just said.
Right, so uh, to to address your concern, I actually have the exact same concern. And then when I heard that, knowing that two of my four, I was just to um, witness, basically. Uh, you know, the load is much lower than it looks on paper. Liaison, that's exactly what it says, a liaison. To distill a say, communication between the governing board and the board that. And you know, obviously, a year and a half isn't a long time to be on the planning board, but I feel like I was there enough to to know how it works. And you know, I can easily sit in the back and, you know, jump in if they have a question. Yeah, and there's nothing inappropriate about offering guidance or answering questions, I mean, or. Again, I I think really the spirit is is to relay information. Yeah. Really back to. The board, right.
That's it.
You're like a secretary of state.
Yeah, like, I mean, right, but I but I will say, though, you know, maybe there is. So when I was, when I did speak, cause I was asked a question at one planning board meeting that I can recall, and I did answer. It was the presenter, um, I believe, asked me a question. I was then chastised by members of the planning board for responding to that question. So I just wanna be very clear, because um, trustee Carson is brand new chip, and I'm just trying to lay the groundwork here, so we can, you know, move forward.
I mean, I would say my advice would be that generally, a liaison should. Allow the board to which you are asking as a liaison to conduct its business. Did it with zoning, right? Right, yeah.
Yeah. You know, so.
But that doesn't, but I would say.
No, Ben.
I think you can't say anything. I I don't think that's accurate. I would never say that it would be improper, certainly illegal for. A trustee liaison to eat at a meeting, but I would try to uh, I try to keep it to the minimum, as opposed to only as necessary. Does that, does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, sure. No, no, but you know, I just wanted to make sure that you were okay with all these different thoughts. You know what I mean? Cause it is, it's, when you look at it, like, oh, my goodness.
Softball.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But um.
There's a piggyback on that, I know, if you don't mind. I was going to, I was here to do A P C, except we were overwhelmed with those committees, taking on all those committees all at once. Uh, because I was former chairperson of the.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So I'm very comfortable as a liaison to that group.
Okay, yeah, well, let's discuss, you know, this is all brand new, of course, so, yeah.
But speaking of liaisons, what am I gonna do with this cabinet thing now?
You're looking at me?
I don't, you know, with the two gentlemen who complained about the cabin road? The signs?
Cabinet, no. They go to traffic and safety?
Oh, my gosh, you have to, this whole time.
You could, you could bring their concern that traffic and safety, and see, I mean, you guys can change the law if you want. This is not the first time it's happened. We did this on Highland, but.
Well, we should, we should bring it back to traffic and safety and just because.
But I wish they would have given me something in writing. I didn't get their full names. Do we have their full names? Do we have them? We can email them to me, please. Do we have their emails? I don't even know, no? Well, we have any information, send it to me and I'll try to contact them.
Just don't hurt on this, right?
You know, I wonder if it would just make sense to invite Jim to a traffic and safety meeting. And sometimes he could probably better explain it than you can, because he, you know.
This was done under recommendation by Tim, who received all these letters, you know what I mean? So I took all the letters to traffic and safety and they reviewed it all. They go, oh, yeah, they're right, they're right, we should change it, and then we changed it. And the center up and.
I'm telling you, five years ago, the exact same thing happened on Highland, when we, we signed it, no parking, I think it was both sides. Everyone came up in arms, we took down the signs, some months later.
Oh, goodness.
Well, I think the cabin situation is also one of those neighbor versus.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yes.
It is, but I was like, I was just shocked, cause we we had a public hearing on it.
Yeah.
You know, and I don't know, that came out of the blue right there, and I feel bad, because I I wanna make sure everybody is okay, you know, there's.
Well, we had to put on our black jackets and hollers. I'll put, I'll tell you that. No one, nobody wanted those signs. Except for the one person.
The one person who wrote the letters.
So. It's tough. That's the way it goes. Understand, right? Nobody wants to. Park in our own street.
Oh, wow.
It's been like they say, it's been like that for how many years?
Yeah.
Well, I've already gotten complaints to the fact that um, we're changing the speed limit around Garrison Park.
Yep.
I've already gotten complaints on that. I'm like, that's not up to me. It's a park and we lowered the speed limit to twenty-five.
Oh, because we own the road now.
Because we own the road now, right? It said before it was a county road, now we own the, I explained the whole thing. But they 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 disagree that it should not be twenty-five. Yeah, I, you know, I I was taken aback and I tried to handle it the best I could, and um, and it's gonna stay that way, end of story.
Yeah, because we've been zoning.
Absolutely, and there are a lot of kids who keep across that road all the time.
Quickly around.
Oh, no. Yeah, it is what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, in that case.
Yeah, we did just get approval from the state last week, I lost a week for COVID, I lost a month of COVID. Uh, so those signs are on order now, they'll be going up, so.
Oh, good, thank you.
You will.
Anything on Evans?
What about it?
We were gonna ask for that.
Oh, the uh.
Through the county?
Uh, that went to Gina, and I have not heard back from her, so I will touch this.
Okay. Thanks, just for Caroline.
Uh, that one needs to.
Yeah, that one needs to go up, thank you. Oh, by the way, the flashing sign on Mill, it doesn't work.
We just got a new motherboard.
Thank you.
We had a uh, a technical difficulty that uh, necessitated a new computer.
Okay, cause don't listen, officer, but I was checking, I was speeding to see if it would activate and didn't. I'm like, why isn't it working? All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's how I check home.
That's a funny way to check.
How you know they're working?
All right, that's it.
Miles an hour.
That's all I have.
I know, uh, Judy, you have, we have a couple of things to discuss the meeting day that.
First is, uh, we gotta set up, we have to set a budget meeting day. Usually, we choose a Saturday in February. So, um. I will most likely not be there at all. The ninth is President's weekend, so we try to stay away from that. So that means the fifth and the twenty-sixth.
I think spring break is. Some winter break that got last week.
It is, it is.
So I would like to avoid that if possible.
So the fifth.
So we get the fifth of February, the fifth of March.
We should do it, cause it usually takes two sometimes, so we should do it the fifth of February. If everybody's available.
From February, it's almost my birthday. Mine too.
That's my birthday weekend. Do we have birthdays on the same day?
No, mine's the third.
Mine's the twelfth.
Mine's the seventh.
Mine's the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, February.
My, I'm gonna chump you all.
But that's my birthday weekend.
It is tonight.
What'd you say?
My birthday's tonight.
It is?
Yeah, happy birthday to me, and I'm at a board meeting. Yeah, thanks. So um, so no complaints about February fifth?
Yeah, right.
So can we do, um, that's Saturday morning, usually we start early, eight o'clock. Cause then we get out of here by noon. So, can we do, um, that's Saturday morning, usually we start early, eight o'clock, cause then we get out of here by noon.
Cause they're evil, evil.
It won't have cost.
No, they're not that bad, Lasso wasn't bad at all.
The player chief and we invite the judge and we invite Ben.
Yeah, I'm not sure Rick's is having, uh, shoulder surgery.
He'll send, um, he'll send somebody.
Yeah, pardon me?
He's gonna be there tomorrow at five forty-five, but he expects to be available.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's having surgery?
We're medics.
Oh, really? Yeah, he's got his budget set. Oh, wow.
For a guy, that's not a good recovery, you know, that.
Yeah, that takes a terrible lot of time.
He's not, he's retiring now, is he?
Okay.
He's gonna have to retire.
February fifth at eight o'clock, everybody has it on their schedule.
Yeah, I wrote it, sorry.
I might have a conflict that day, but I'm gonna have to check with the chief executive officer.
Okay, so that settles that, and then the Nikon conference.
There's a Nikon conference, February thirteenth to fourteenth, I didn't know if anybody was interested in going to it.
I, I'm not.
Would you say, Chris?
I thought online.
There is one coming up again in May, um, which is a little more robust for, um, like, as far as educational stuff for village position.
I think that's probably.
So that would probably, if you're gonna pick one, you probably wanna pick the one in May.
Okay.
Ben, do you have anything else?
Um, we've talked about super consolidation, I just wanna remind everyone that we do have a grant, uh, the W I I A grant that we were awarded last year, that we.
Thank you.
We should start thinking about spending, I don't know what.
How much is it, Ben?
Two million?
One point four two five.
Twenty-five percent of the sixty-four.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
A little under one and a half million.
Yes.
Well, we can use that to.
We, I mean, we certainly have areas of the village that we should be doing workout.
Yeah.
But, like you said, it's a twenty-eight.
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, seven.
So, we, we put out seventy-five to get twenty-five percent rate person. Right, in, in, in budget, in the spirit of talking budget.
Yeah. We should talk about that.
You know, we'll need to commit to do this, or else we're losing a significant grant fund, and it is, you know, moving the village forward to its ultimate goal of consolidation, not quite as fast.
Bonding, or the full amount, so we do already have that.
Okay, well, that's gonna be something we're gonna have to do then.
Yeah, I mean.
So, just to.
And, you know, we'll talk to, to Bernie about going after this, see if they have been.
Yeah, we'll continue to go after it.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we're not gonna do six thousand dollars, six million dollars worth of work in a year, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this is a long haul project.
Right, so, you know, just keep, keep that in mind, because we have also authorized plenty of expenditures for our engineers to be working on this. And so, we could turn out several hundred thousand dollars. So, they're, they're kinda waiting for us to say, okay, let's go, since we didn't get the big grant, we're not gonna have the big firework, but, so, we're gonna have a little bit smaller affair here to take us off, but I really do believe that it's, it behooves us to keep that in mind. That said, I am proud to report that today, the village D P W did not cost us money, we made you money today. We, our solar panels are up and running.
Yay.
We actually made more than we used to.
So, where are they, Ben?
On the D P W.
That's so cool.
As you're driving down Main Street and east, you'll be able to see.
The Bee's gotta do a story on that.
About half the.
Don't anybody there.
Wish she.
It's designed to.
Talking to the wrong guy.
It was a hundred percent true.
Awesome.
Well, that's awesome, yay, we should have had a ribbon cutting for that, Ben.
No, we don't need it, it's fine.
Oh, I'm so excited.
Hello.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm in a village board meeting, I, I see, thank you.
Was it police calling? Your mother, right?
No, it's the police.
It looks like we got snow, it's been so engrossed in here, I noticed.
Yeah.
Yeah, just got a text, getting very wintry outside.
Oh, geez.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Alright, I think we're done, so, work session, thank you all.
I could use another bathroom, right?
Okay, well, you can always add, we'll give you a bathroom. What do we need? Yeah, ask him, he's supposed to say what, what planning they're coming because that.
That's, 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 Marcus, bring it in. Bring it in, we're gonna get some salt in.